We're gonna keep going.
I got too much stuff.
Again, we want to welcome you to this July 13th meeting of the Tallahassee City Commission. Before we go any further, we want to thank the staff, the board, of the senior center, and all of the city hall staff who made preparation to locate us here. Sheila, I see you in the back of the room. Please apologize to all of the classes that you canceled to make this possible, and let them know that Commissioner Ziffer is the cause of those cancellations.
Can I get to respond?
No, no. For those who are willing and able...
I mean, he's a member here.
That's right. And Commissioner Maddox is a charter member here. For those of you who are willing and able, will you please stand for the invocation, which will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance?
Eternal God, thank you for the members of the community that have joined us this afternoon, and for the homes and businesses they represent. We ask that you give peace and comfort to everyone impacted by the recent tragedies throughout our nation. Embrace us with your love and a love for others. Give us wisdom in the decisions regarding the matters presented before us today, that we may continue to serve our citizens. In your name we pray, amen. Yes, sir. We have a few additions and one deletion. Item number 5.03 and number 5.04, recognitions that were added. 11.7 is the approval of the selection of one representative by the full city commission to the Tallahassee Leon County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. 13.09 is the employment litigation settlement. And 13.11 is the approval of the subdivision Platte Meadows at Oak Grove. Item number 11.05 was deleted.
Thank you, city manager, if your agendas could reflect those changes. We now have the opportunity to present a few proclamations to the public. And the first one will be presented by myself, and I want to invite forward for this presentation, which will be a proclamation recognizing the Junior Achievement Big Ben Shark Bowl winners. I want to invite forward the first through fifth place winners. First place winner, and you all can hold your applause, and then we can give them a robust applause for their achievement, will be Emily Gordon from Charles High School. The second place winner will be Chai Ray Wu from Leon High School. The third place winner will be Andrew Goran, and I know he's not here, from Lincoln High School. And Mom, if you're out there, you can come up and stand instead. The fourth place winner is Travis Harville from Godby High School. And the fifth place winner is Kenzie Griggs from Rickards High School. Will you all give them a round of applause for their achievement? I also want to invite forward the respective administrators from each of the schools. You all do such amazing work all throughout the year. We want to acknowledge you also for your mentorship and leadership of these young people. The young people come closer to me. The proclamation reads, "Whereas Junior Achievement, also JA, is the nation's largest organization dedicated to giving young people the knowledge and the skills they need to all their economic success. Plan for their futures and make smart academic and economic choices. JA USA reaches more than 4.6 million students per year. And whereas in support of JA pillars of work readiness, entrepreneurship, and financial literacy, Junior Achievement Big Ben was established in 2013, reaching over 3,000 local students annually. Junior Achievement Big Ben's purpose is to inspire and prepare young people to succeed in a global economy. And whereas JA provides programs that are delivering in classrooms K through 12, with more than 300 volunteers locally, the organization has developed multiple lasting partnerships with teachers and administrators of all area schools, civic organizations, business leaders, and our areas post-secondary institutions, who have all contributed to the success of JA Big Ben. And whereas in 2015-16, Leon County Schools partnered with JA Big Ben to bring JA's Be Entrepreneurial program to over 1,500 high school students this year. While introducing them to the prospect of starting their own business, students were inspired to develop the entrepreneurial skills that they need to become more productive and innovative workers. Students created business models and competed to represent their school in the First Annual Junior Achievement Big Ben Shark Bowl. With every high school equally represented, 25 students showcased their business models and competed for cash prizes and scholarships." Cash is more exciting than today, I'm sure. And whereas the Junior Achievement Big Ben Board of Directors acknowledges and congratulates the 2015 and 16 winners for the First Annual Junior Achievement Big Ben Shark Bowl. First place winner, Emily, from Charles High School. Second place winner, Chai Ray Wu of Leon High School. Third place winner, Andrew Goran of Lincoln High School. Fourth place winner, Travis Harville of Godby High School. And fifth place winner, Kenzie Griggs of Rickards High School. And winning First Annual Shark Bowl School Trophy, Charles High School. Now therefore I, as the mayor of the city of Tallahassee, and on behalf of the Tallahassee City Commission, do hereby honor and recognize these exemplary students and their families for contributing to the future and the unique fabric of our great city. Will you give them again a round of applause? I wanted to invite forward, wanted you to be representative and to receive this on you all's behalf.
Thank you so much. This is such an honor, and I really enjoyed doing Junior Achievement this year, as I'm sure all of my other peers could say. So, thank you so much.
Stay up here. We actually have the trophy represented, and I believe Charles may be taking it back. Mr. Chairman?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you to the commission for recognizing these truly exceptional students. At Junior Achievement Big Ben, we want to lead our community, and we want to lead our future. And this entrepreneurial program has been an outstanding partnership with Leon County Schools, and we appreciate that partnership very much, and what we've been able to accomplish. These students all worked very hard on their presentations. They all did an outstanding job. But it's also important to know that we put nearly 1,500 students through the entrepreneurial program in Leon County High Schools this year, and these were the best of the best. And we congratulate you, and we thank you all for this recognition.
Awesome. Congratulations. And I think we've got a beautiful trophy that Emily and the representatives from Charles is going to accept on their behalf. You all should know also that Emily, our first place winner, happens to be a freshman. So she competed against folks of all grades and brought this trophy home for Charles as a freshman student. I want to invite forward my colleague Commissioner Scott Maddox, and he'll be followed by Commissioner Nancy Miller for a few initial presentations.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could get Hunter Hansteen to come forward, and his family if you'd like. Somebody's got to hold the camera, now they want to stay out there. In 2013, I came forward with a push to add bus shelters throughout our community because we had a definite need for bus shelters. And I had a present surprise. Hunter Hansteen called the office and came by to see me, to see how he could help. My first thought was that he obviously got his height, his size, his athletic prowess from his body. Somewhere in her family, because I know his father, he's also a star athlete. So Hunter saw this need and said he was going for his Eagle Scout badge, and he thought that he could lend a hand to building a bus shelter in his community. If we've got it up there, we're trying. But in the meantime, he was quite successful. His Eagle Scout project is not only up and going, it is being used today. So kids, students, parents, elderly, senior citizens that are waiting for the bus are not having to do so in the hot sun, they're not having to do so while standing, they're not having to stand in the mud or wait in the rain. And if we all did just a little piece of change in the world, like Hunter has, we would make the world a better place. So I'm excited to present this proclamation. Whereas Hunter Hansteen, a local high school student, worked with Star Metro, the city's mass transit system, to construct a much-needed bus shelter near his school, Florida State University Schools. And whereas, inspired to give back to his beloved community, Hunter, who is a member of Boy Scouts of America, took the initiative to approach the city of Tallahassee as part of his Eagle Scout service project. And whereas, over several months, Hunter collaborated with Star Metro, he raised funds, repurposed old shelter parts, recruited volunteers, and helped install the bus shelter. And whereas, now complete, the bus shelter serves Florida State University Schools, also known as Florida High, and the entire Southwood community, helping connect students and citizens alike to the rest of Tallahassee via the Star Metro system. And whereas, because of his leadership and civic commitment, Hunter has achieved his Eagle Scout rank, the highest rank attainable in the Boy Scouting Program. Only 4% of Boy Scouts are granted the Eagle Scout rank after a lengthy review process. And whereas, Hunter is a wonderful example of our community's young people taking an active role in making Tallahassee a better place. And whereas, the city of Tallahassee wishes to encourage all citizens to embody Hunter's commitment to his community. Now therefore I, Scott Maddox, on behalf of Mayor Andrew Gillum and the entire city commission, to hereby acknowledge Hunter Hansteen for his civic commitment to our city. We are very appreciative of the time and contributions Hunter has given to Tallahassee. And in addition to this proclamation, we provide the city of Tallahassee's Boy Scout badge.
You know, I just wanted to thank the city of Tallahassee and Star Metro for all the work and all the help that they gave me throughout the process. It's been truly amazing to see the results from the project, helping people and people using it every day. So that's been great. So, thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Just very quickly. The Hansteens were neighbors of mine for 10 years, probably. In fact, I think when I first met Hunter, he was about Alan Soss. Sorry, Alan, you're... There were many occasions, even in a very young age, Hunter helped organize young people, kids, to grow in the neighborhood, and tree trees that got in the way of folks that were disabled, and all sorts of other projects. He was always the person that other kids would look to, and he's turned out to be just a wonderful young man, and also has a part-time job, and is a football player. We're very proud of you, and we look forward to hearing more about you, and Amy and Alan, you can't imagine being ever more proud of a young man than you should be right now. So congratulations to the whole family.
Mr. Mayor, I too. I served on the Swanee River Area Council Boy Scouts here in our community, and I can tell you, we are also very proud of you and what you've achieved. Eagle Scout is a selective fraternity. Not many people make it, and when you do, there are a world of opportunities that will be out there for you. And so stay in touch with those who have made it to that level as well. So on behalf of the council, we congratulate you and your family as well.
Congratulations. Join me in welcoming Commissioner Miller for the next two presentations. Commissioner Miller?
Hello, folks. Thank you for coming to our meeting tonight. I'm here because I have been given the very special opportunity to serve as chair for the event Making Strides Against Breast Cancer in October. Now, this is an event that attracts 5,000, 6,000 people in our city. It raises a tremendous amount of money, almost $200,000, in order to, for one purpose, and that is to fight breast cancer. All of the money goes directly to fighting breast cancer, either in terms of research or education for the public, or support of the survivors. So I wanted to bring that program forward today. Most of you, most, if not all of us, have been impacted by someone close to us, either a friend, or a colleague, or a family member, or our own personal selves have been affected by breast cancer. Just think about it. I mean, just about every one of us probably knows someone or has had this experience of our own. And this is such a very, very important effort, and that's why I agreed to chair this effort for this year. There will be two events that this will encompass, and one of those is in August on the 25th, and then the final walk is in October of 23rd of this year. I want to invite Ellen Blair forward. Is Ellen here? There she is. Ellen is our Human Resources Director, and she has, through the arm twisting, she has agreed to be our team development chair, and she will be taking all of your applications for your teams to walk in solidarity with this, and supporting this very, very important cause on October 23rd. Ellen is going to tell you a little bit more about the campaign, and so I'm going to yield to Ellen right now.
Thank you, Commissioner Miller. So I am very pleased and I appreciate the honor of working with Commissioner Miller and the American Cancer Society on this very worthwhile cause. Commissioner Miller already stole my thunder about the big event, and we've got plenty of postcards up here to save the date for Sunday, October 23rd at 3 o'clock at Cascades Park. So I look forward to seeing all of you there. I'm going to be championing the effort for the city workforce and trying to get employees who are interested to be engaged and to participate, and increase the number of teams that we have represented there at that day. So thank you very much, and I'm going to leave a stack of these in the back. So anyone who has an interest in it, there'll be some available for you. Thank you.
And we guarantee, we guarantee by commission action that this is going to be a beautiful fall afternoon.
And if it isn't, it was her weather meter that broke it, the weather. Commissioner, if you could stand close by. I also want to use this occasion to recognize the work of some local artist from Rickards High School's International Baccalaureate Program, who volunteered their time and their talent in helping to make the stairwell in City Hall a little more pleasant and experience for employees to walk in and out of. Now, this presentation would have gone very differently if we were in City Hall. We'd probably all take a field trip to go to the stairwell, but we're going to improvise today. The reason why Commissioner Miller is making this presentation is because of her effort, and really leading efforts at City Hall to recognize young artists in our community, and to present them today with a certificate and appreciation from City Hall and City Hall employees, who I am sure are going to use this stairwell actively. Commissioner Miller, I'd like to invite you forward, as well as if there are any of the students, artists from the IB program. Can we invite you all forward? Will you give them a hand as they come, our young artists?
This is truly a great pleasure, I have to say. This young lady here is my Hannah, and I have known her since she was about this high. And when she came to... find this place for her to do this beautiful mural. It's called the Stairway to Health, and the reason that we call it that is that we've been looking for ways to make, before Maya and I had the talk, we've been looking for ways for, to make our stairways more attractive and more interesting for people to actually go to the trouble to walk. And I had gone over to the county, they have wonderful stairways, by the way, and they understand the value of having a comfortable space, and I came back with that story and said, you know, we need to do better here for our employees. So we connected Maya's staff, and they all determined, oh, and by the way, where's Lisa Galosi? I meant to ask her to come up. There you are. Okay. Lisa is the person, Lisa along with John Baker are the people who, in facilities, who actually got this all organized and made sure everybody had access. But basically, the idea is to make the stairwells an attractive place, is to encourage folks to use the stairways. And this dressed-up stairway is an attraction, and walking up and down on this case has now become an adventure, and I hope we have some pictures. Do we have some pictures to show to people? Yeah, I wish, can, they are. Doesn't even begin to do justice to the stairwell. But, so you'll have to go there yourselves, you'll have to go to the stairwell at City Hall and see what this all looks like. So with the help of Maya and her peers, we have transformed that stairway into a place where people really want to go, and as you walk up and down, you see these, you see something different every time. I mean, the 10th time you go up, you're going to find something that you didn't see before. Because she's put, she and her, and her team here have put all these little touches in the things that they did as they moved forward with their project. Maya designed and painted much of it, and the slides, which you can barely see, they captured the completed program, project, and it depicts our state's natural environment and wildlife. Over the summer, the Office of Community Relations will work collaboratively with Building Services and our HR department to complete the next phase, which is really going to be to clean up the rest of the stairway. Now, I want to, where's the certificate that I want to present? Be the partner here. So it is with great appreciation and true excitement that I present the first certificate to Maya Hannes, and if she wants to speak, I'll let her tell you where her name came from. Maya's going to be attending the Massachusetts Institute of Technology this coming fall. This certificate reads, "City of Tallahassee Certificate of Appreciation, Maya Hannes, for painting the floor and the native wildlife mural in City Hall, and for your contribution to the Stairway of Health Wellness Initiative." Somebody's ready to go up the stairway.
Lap and a half, and you still got to leave.
That was absolutely wonderful. The next certificate goes to Alexandra Rogers, and she will be attending Florida State University next fall. Is she not here? The next certificate is Siobhan Jones, and she will be attending, Siobhan will be attending Florida State University. The next one is Nisha Mattel, and she will be attending Wellesley. Is she here? Hmm. You all are going to have a big time up there in the Northeast. Try to represent Tallahassee well. The next one is Karen Mattel, and Karen is a rising junior at Rickards. Then we have Samantha Hatcher. Samantha will be attending Agnes Scott College in Georgia. And next we have Phaedra Richardson, who will be attending Dartmouth. And finally, we have Cyan Kiroz, who is going to Bard College in New York. I want also to give a shout-out to Pat McCray, who is the assistant to the city manager and the staff, who purchased the paint and the work for Maya and her team as they did their work. So, thank you very, very, very much.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like to introduce the young man here. He was hard to recognize. This is the principal of Rickards High School.
I know, and I apologize. You all have left us a wonderful, wonderful parting gift as you go up, and I wish you, all of us, wish you the very, very best, and we know that you will represent us well as you go forward.
All right, we're now at the portion of the meeting where we will take public comment at the beginning of the City Commission meeting. We do set aside 30 minutes to receive comments from the public on items listed on the agenda. Speakers who wish to address items that are not on the agenda should stick around to the end of the meeting, and we take public comment again at that time for un-agenda speakers. With that being said, I want to turn it over to the treasurer clerk to begin with the public.
Thank you, Mayor. The first speaker for this meeting tonight is Richard Dusenberry, and he will be followed by Dan Stingle. I'll remind Mr. Dusenberry, though he's spoken to us before, that speakers have three minutes for your remarks. Here, there is no lighter signal, but I'll let you know when your three minutes have expired, and if you will, give us your name and address for the record. Thank you.
Richard Dusenberry, I live at 439 West Georgia Street. I want to talk to you about the conflict in Frenchtown between urban renewal and Frenchtown A simple case that I think gets this started is TBX, which is a Tampa project. This is urban renewal. This is a quote, "Top regional officials are urging the public to get behind TBX, calling the project to boon to business owners, their employers, tourists. The Tampa Bay Times reported, 'The project puts a disproportionate burden on minority and low-income residents. Nearly 80% of the properties to be demolished are Black and Latino.'" We have Tallahassee examples, we've got Smoky Hollow, we've got the Carter Strong Howell Pond, we have the widening, the intersection of McComb and Bainbridge. Also in Frenchtown, we've experienced very aggressive code enforcement, which is harvest donations and demolitions of so-called blight. Then come the top-down projects, like the Tishburg Garden and the five-story housing project that's planned for McComb Street. These fail to involve and empower residents, and they dilute neighborhood ownership. Belief that top-down urban renewal projects like these revitalize a neighborhood is delusional. Revitalization is afoot in Frenchtown. Huge things going on. Bethel Towers, Carolina Oaks, the Dunn Street Farm, the Front Porch Initiative, B. Sharps, the Lincoln Center, the Tooks Hotel, the Frenchtown Heritage Market Hub, on and on, the Frenchtown Financial Opportunity Center, the Frenchtown Neighborhood Improvement Association, which is, by the way, a CDC, and the Ash Gallery. These initiatives are involving, educating, and empowering. All of these people involved in these view the five-story rental project to be revitalizing to the neighborhood. Commissioners, please withdraw your support from these top-down urban renewal projects in historic Frenchtown. And here's my suggestion on how you can do that. On item 13.07, give zero HUD Frenchtown revitalization dollars to the CDC, call in the long overdue loans to the CDC, and foreclose on the properties. On agenda item 10.01, I ask you to choose an option that transfers the ownership in a way to this project, which they want to use the property, they just don't want to own it, in a way that it is a property rights transfer such that this will become subject to a Site Plan B review, and this can then, project can be aired publicly in a way that we can get a chance to be involved and hopefully recover some of what was intended in the Village Marketplace project. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Next speaker is Dan Stingle, followed by Cheryl Collier-Brown. These next several speakers are all on item 10.01.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Dan.
Members of the commission. My name is Dan Stingle of Dan Stingle Attorney LLC, 502 North Adams Street, and I'm here on behalf of Frenchtown Square Partners LLC and its principal developer, Pinnacle Housing Group. This is a project that is subject to Site Plan Review Type A, and both of the iterations of this project fully comply with city code, as the city attorney's office and various offices have confirmed. This is nothing new, you've been aware of this project, and the developer has worked hard to address some neighborhood concerns. It is here, therefore, on the matter of an easement, that the city of Tallahassee would enter into an agreement for easement management and transfer by the developer, which would allow some parking for commercial and retail that are going in, surrounding this project, and it would allow parking on that. The developer has listened to the citizens and their concerns, and has tried to respond to those by asking the city to incorporate, which it is here today to do, this easement, which would do a couple of things that were of concern to the local citizens in Frenchtown. One of them would be the maintenance of the Cassanas House, which is a historic property previously occupied by Aquilina Howell, very important project. Approving the easement would allow that building to be maintained, restored, used as a management and leasing office, and as part, the developer has committed to doing a component of a Frenchtown historical museum with various artifacts from the area. The other thing that it would do is it would move the entrance out of the neighborhood so that it's not on the residential street, and again, the amenities would include a parking area that is maintained in an area that is completely not used currently. We think that this project, with the easement or without the easement, brings needed economic development, and not urban renewal, revitalization of the Frenchtown area, which this commission, and we've heard about it and talked about it for years, has so committed and put resources to improving the Frenchtown area. I do know there are people that believe that this is not the right way to go. We believe this is a very high-quality development, which will ultimately improve and help revitalize, continue the revitalization of the Frenchtown area. It's a very quality development, and I would, we would appreciate your approval. Do you have any questions for me?
Sign on. Thank you, Dan. I appreciate it.
Thank you all.
We're going to, I know that there was a speaker who has a couple of energetic children, and as a parent to two-year-olds, I understand, so we're going to take you out of order, see that your item is on an item that is not agendaed. So if we could call...
Linda Provet?
Linda Forward, we'd appreciate it.
And then she'll be followed by Cheryl Collier-Brown.
Hi, I came in regards to the Project Bridge over there in South Side. We have a summer program going on with about 30 kids, and the type of kids we have is kids whose parents is incarcerated, kids who have behavior problems, who have all sorts of issues. And this program is going on in South Side with only one person, that is myself. We have about five, seven teenagers that help work with these young kids, trying to make a difference in the home and as well as in the community. And we want everyone here to know and be aware of this program that is going on in South Side. We knock on doors, asking for assistance, and the only person that gave some type of assistance was Reverend Holm at Beltha. And so we are opening up the doors, opening up our hearts, and we're going to make a difference, we have to start working with the kids at a very young age. And the kids that we serve is kids between ages of five to 13 years old, and these kids' parents have nowhere to go. These kids, when they are in a program, they are rejected because of their behavior problem. Some of them is on medication. And so I am asking the city, if they don't mind, open up their hearts and see if there's any way that they can assist this program, the Project Bridge, with any type of help. I have a 1980, a 1999 Durango that I haul about 12 kids in, I have 30 that I have to make three trips to the library, to the swimming pool, and to the movies. And I am just one person over there in South Side trying to make a difference, and I stand before you, asking you if there's any way that you, I know we are not a big-name program, but my heart is huge. And as you can see, I have more than enough kids, but no type of sister. And so once again, my name is Ms. Linda Provet, this is Project Bridge, and we have been doing this for over several years. And so now, I'm coming forward, asking if there's any kind of support that I can get. Please consider me. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Provet, for the work that you do with these young people. I don't know if there's somebody from our Human Services staff, actually, there is, Michael Parker is there. I want you to make sure you get his information, because he can walk you through the process that is established here at the city by which a citizens' panel considers all proposals for funding for human services projects. We don't have a process by which we do it outside of that, and so I want to make sure you get to see. Michael, Michael, you raise your hand again to Ms. Provet, and hopefully...
Well, we did have submitted for a proposal with United Way, but because, I mean, signing in two places, we was rejected. And this is not the first time that I have done it.
Well, I want to clarify that our process is separate from that of the United Way.
All right.
We have a separate city process.
Okay.
Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right. Sorry for the interruption.
No worries, not at all. No interruption.
Cheryl Collier-Brown?
Cheryl.
And then Keith Bowers.
I'm here to address the project that's slated to be built on the corner of McComb and Bainbridge Road, Bard Street. I know it's probably a done deal at this point, but I am very, very concerned about the location of the building, and I've been before you previously with this concern. The gentleman that came up prior, before me, speaking about the revitalization of Frenchtown, well, we've been hearing about it for years, and years and years, and it's been a slow-moving process, and I'm still trying to visualize how this huge building, apartment complex, is going to revitalize our area, especially how it might affect Carolina Oaks, which was just voted the smaller neighborhood association in the city. So I have a concern about that, also have this concern about the flow of traffic that's going to impact our neighborhood in that area on Bard Street where I live. It's just a concern, and I want you all to start looking at and really considering us over in the Frenchtown area, because I really feel that we are being slighted and ignored in some capacity, not trying to knock anything you're doing, but please consider that you do have concerned residents that's living in that area, and we want to be more privy to what's going on there, because right now... to what's going on there, because right now, I'm not really pleased. But that's just one person that lives there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next is Keith Bowers, Delaetrey Hollinger.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Commissioner. My name is Keith Bowers. I live at 432 West Carolina Street, Frenchtown. And I am standing in opposition of support of the Frenchtown development. For a number of years, a lot of engaged, concerned citizens have sacrificed and fought, invested, and basically decided to try to live in Frenchtown and revitalize it from the inside out, not the outside in. And I see that is a big obstacle that a lot of developers come in and they assume, and a lot of folks assume, that they have, you know, properly gauged the willingness or an acceptance for projects such as this in low-income communities. But the concentration of affordable housing in low-income communities, especially those that are undergoing revitalization efforts, in my opinion, is a step backwards. It moves the community back, and it has a tendency to erase the gains that have been made over the years. My wife and I moved in Carolina Oaks in 2005, in the shadow of the homeless shelter, probably at the lowest level of Frenchtown. And we began the conscious effort of trying to get more upwardly mobile folks to move in and buy into the vision, saying that this community needs a resurgence. And it's not going to be a resurgence that's generated by more low-income people coming into the community. Carolina Oaks is a mixed-income community, and that was done by design. We need to have folks who are upwardly mobile to serve as role models for low-income folks. We need to have the amenities that folks have in Southwood, Kalarne, and other areas. You don't see a concentration of low-income affordable housing in those areas, and it's just going to, in my opinion, set us back further. So again, I ask that you give careful consideration of how you choose to move forward with this development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Delaetrey Hollinger, also on item 10.01. He'll be followed by Jeremy Matlow, who will be on item 13.01.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. Thank you for this opportunity. I'm here to speak in opposition of this project, project which I've expressed opposition to a number of times, both to this commission and this public forum, as well as to the City Economic Department. We're talking about a five-story, 88-unit housing project, a building that is going to be even taller than the Renaissance Center. And what I am afraid of is that we are paving the way for another Ebony Gardens, paving the way for another Carolina Place. This project is opposed by the Carolina Oaks Homeowners Association, the Frenchtown Neighborhood Improvement Association, Economy Drugs, Watson Temple Church, St. Mary's Primitive Baptist Church, the Urban League, the NAACP, the barber shops, the businesses. The list goes on and on and on, and the residents. You have already heard three of the residents speak in opposition to this, because they were not involved in the project to begin with. The residents became involved in this project after the fact. And so that is why I'm here on this afternoon. And then ultimately, this commission is being told that if you don't approve this easement, it will lead to the demolition of the Cassanis House, home of the legendary Aquilina Howell, very prominent educator in this community. And, you know, it's something that we don't need in Frenchtown. It does not conform to the historical integrity of this community. The original proposal was to have commercial development. Housing does not contribute to economic development. And I would like to see a slice of Frenchtown brought back. When you're talking about economic development, you're talking about stacking people on top of each other who still have to go out of this community to have commerce, to shop, to buy clothes, to buy food. They still have to go out of Frenchtown to do that. So I don't see how that contributes to the development of the economy in this area. So if you would strongly consider, Commissioners, not approving this easement and taking a strong stand, and also not approving, giving funding through HUD to this organization that still owes the city of Tallahassee over $600,000. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Jeremy Matlow, who waves his time. Thomas Lewis on item 13.07, which is approval of the annual HUD plan.
Good evening, Commissioners. Thomas Lewis, the executive director of the Big Ben Community Development Corporation, 421 West Georgia Street. Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm coming to you today to speak to you about the agenda item number 13.07. I'm asking that you not approve option one, but instead approve option two, because option two will continue the funding of the Big Ben Community Development Corporation for fiscal year 2015, 16, 2017. At the last city commission meeting during the public hearing on the city's HUD annual action plan, the question was asked, what is it that the Big Ben CDC does, and how much, and why, and why, how much, and why do they owe the city money? Big Ben CDC is a city-certified, HUD-recognized, community-based development organization, and as such, is funded by the city to conduct activities that provide redevelopment and revitalization services to the community. Staff has provided you, as a part of the agenda item, a report of the 2014, 15, and 15, 16 fiscal year activities of the Big Ben CDC. But let me, if I may, elaborate on some of that. The Good 360 Community Pantry Program. Through this program, the Big Ben CDC has purchased the contractual rights to receive the donations from the Bed Bath &amp; Beyond store in Panama City, Destin, and Panama City Beach. We also purchased the rights to receive the donations from the Williams Sonoma store in Destin, Florida. We've also purchased the rights to receive the donations from the Home Depot stores in Lake City and Tallahassee. And what we have done with this program is, over the four years since we've been giving the donations, we have given these donations to human service agencies in the community. We created pantries at the senior center, the senior program at the Lincoln Center, the senior program at the Smith Williams Center. And I want to recognize Gwen Lucas and Frank Holmes as the people who worked with us to create these programs, where the seniors could receive these donations. Additionally, we provide donations to the Hope Community, the Big Ben Homeless Coalition, the Homeless Shelter, the Community Center, the Refuge House, Good Moves Ministries, and we work with Eddie Franklin at Friendship Primitive Baptist Church in providing resources to his parishioners. We have provided them with household items such as towels, sheets, pillowcases, mattress pads, comforters, and other household items that have been given to us, that have been given to us and they given to their clients. The value of these donations for the past year is well over a million dollars. The donations we receive from Home Depot, we give those to people who are in need of supplies to fix their houses. We just gave the other day fans to the Refuge House.
Excuse me, your three minutes have expired.
We've committed to give them 300 yards of carpet. But these are the things that the Big Ben CDC does with the resources that we get, as well as we conduct community concerts. We've held three activities, a movie, and two concerts. Matter of fact, Ann Harris and I sat down and agreed that the Big Ben CDC would sponsor a band in the Frenchtown Heritage Festival scheduled for November. So we work with the community and would hope that you would continue the funding of the organization for this coming year.
Thank you, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you.
Next speaker. Next is Edward Holyfield, speaking on item 9.02, approval of directors to the TMH Board He will be followed by Steve Stewart.
This is not funny, Curtis. You can sit up there and laugh if you want to. TMH is an abomination. Was an abomination from the very beginning. And I'll tell you why. TMH didn't care if black people died back in 1947, when it was constructed. And the city is complicit. Y'all were responsible, because the city owned the hospital. And TMH is different from Grady, or Charity, or all these other hospitals that segregated against blacks. Because at Charity, they would let you in at least and send you to the racist segregated war. Same thing at Grady. They didn't let you, but they wouldn't let you die. TMH would let you die. They didn't care. And people did die. And this racism that TMH against the black community can continue decade after decade after decade. Family Practice Program, TMH, 1971 to 1983, no blacks, no black residents. Racists is all get up. And Curtis, you sit up there and laugh. So I just, this is my three minutes. You be crowded until I finish. Let me tell you about what's going on now. None of the board members have been vetted. They should all resign. You know, the city attorney hadn't heard about this lease agreement until I told him, a long time ago. I don't know if he recalls. And Pat Hurley finally produced the lease agreement. Goes back to 1979. But now they want to put all these people on the board. What Kelly Dozier, you know, she should be embarrassed. Roy Dozier was appointed to the board, her husband, back in 2005, 11 years ago. Is this some kind of family legacy? 11 years ago, there's not a single black TMH board member from a black zip code. Not one. It's not a representative board. Black people don't get to say on that black board from the black community. Poor people don't say on the board. People on Medicaid don't say on the board. It's a country club board. Well, Curtis sits up there and laughs. Well, look, this thing regarding neighborhood health, there's no difference between neighborhood and TMH. Neighborhood 501(c)(3), TMH 501(c)(3). And that little description that y'all put out was dishonest, because it didn't point out that TMH uses tens of millions of dollars in regard to the land and the buildings that the city owns for a dollar a year.
Excuse me, that's-
One dollar a year. And y'all charge neighborhood $42,000 a year for those dilapidated buildings. So if that's not a racist double standard, I don't know what it is. And the point Kelly Dozier would be in a domination. Mad Dog Construction, how much business does TMH give to Mad Dog Construction? Why is not that not a conflict of interest? But nobody doesn't even ask those questions.
Dr. Holyfield, you-
So I'm just, I'm going to finish. I'm just saying that this whole thing about racist double standards regarding neighborhood relative to the TMH needs to come to an end. TMH doesn't even deserve tax-exempt status.
Thank you, Dr. Holyfield.
And that dollar-a-year lease-
Thank you, Dr.-
That racist dollar-a-year lease needs to be ended-
Thank you.
-immediately.
Have a good evening, sir.
Next speaker, please. Mr. Mayor, the next speaker is Steve Stewart. He'll be followed by Annie Harris. And they are the last two speakers for this portion of our meeting. We do have another speaker, but that's for a public hearing.
Steve Stewart, 3048 Waterford Drive. I said earlier, I didn't know the reorder was being brought up in this meeting, but I wanted to, in the same vein, get as much information out to you as I possibly could. We had, I had handed out a document that shows some comparisons earlier. I hope you still have that. This is, this is an article that is fresh. It was published in April about Lakeland, and it, I think it can provide some direction or some information here in the decisions you have to deal with under the reorganization and the salaries that were in the news over the last couple of weeks. The city of Lakeland had to hire a new city manager. They promoted within, and they promoted a city, an assistant city manager to deputy city assistant city manager. And this document shows that they gave that person a 7% raise, and his salary was $136,000. The open assistant city manager position they advertised, it has not been filled yet, but they advertised, and they've received 150 applications for that position. And the price, the range of the hiring salary is between $85,000 and $158,000. I wanted you to have this, because it's important that the decisions that you make match up with what is in real life. This is something that is going on now. Decisions that are credible tend to instill confidence in the decision-makers, and I hope this, with the document that I provided previously, will help you in that endeavor. Thank you very much.
Next speaker. Next speaker, Annie Harris, on item 10.01 and 13.07.
My name is Annie Harris. I live at 436 West Georgia Street, Tallahassee. I didn't expect my name to be called. I think everybody on the commission know that I object to the project on the corner. You can call it anything, but it's a project housing on stilts. And that many project people in a building like that, you have the traffic that cannot even, you can't even accommodate that number of people. When Mr. Commissioner of Buildings, with the city commission, that commission sent a letter saying they would not destroy the five properties that were left in the 400 block of Georgia Street, which happened to be Ash Gallery, the Taylor House, Cassanis House, the Purple House, and also the Counseling Center on the corner. Those are the only five structures left. So that has already been broken when they talk about destroying the Cassanis House. I have spoken to Lucia Alexander, who happened to be the sister of Aquilina. No one can say they didn't know I didn't want it. Let's just put it that way. And not just me. I thought I'd let the other homeowners speak tonight. But you need commercial on that corner. We need places we can go shop next door, we can sit down and have a cup of coffee. And I know Aquilina is a wonderful woman, but she would be totally shocked at the mess that's going on on that corner and everything else. Don't use that name, and I would ask that you consider stopping that easement. And really, we need commercial, not 800 and some units or whatever, and projects on stilts that will automatically bring homeless back and crime. And thank you for listening to me.
Mayor, that's the last speaker at this time?
Right. Thank you very much to all the individuals who came out to give public testimony. Commissioners, we are now at the consent agenda. Commissioner Miller.
Mayor, I think you pull item number 9.01 off the table.
Okay. Show that I haven't pulled. We've also pulled 9.01. Commissioner Ziffer.
9.01, the attorney represents the plaintiff. It works for law firm that is a client of mine, and I've had a conversation with the city attorney, and I have to abstain from this.
Okay. Is there a motion on the remainder of consent? Second. There's a motion to approve consent, with the exception of those two items. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 9.01, is this the city attorney? Or is this Commissioner?
9.01 is a settlement, a personal injury lawsuit. It's a recommended settlement of a case in which the city was clearly at fault. The-
Move approval.
Risk manager-
Second.
And the city attorney recommends-
City attorney, there's been a motion. In a second, I'm going to go ahead and acknowledge it. Is there any additional discussion? All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, show the motion for zero. Commissioner Ziffer abstaining. The next item pulled from the agenda was 9.01. Commissioner Miller.
I have learned very recently that I have a family member who is one of the subcontractors on this project, and so I will not be participating in the discussion, and I will be leaving the dais while you all discuss it and take a vote.
Great. Thank you. Commissioner Ziffer.
Is that right? I'm sorry.
No, I don't have a problem. It's open for discussion now, or?
Yes, it's now open for discussion.
You know, I've been very vocal about this project. I continue to be opposed to it. I don't think it's appropriate for that area. I think there are other things that we can do there, so I'll be voting against this.
Commissioner Maddox.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Well, let me address the project as a whole and then what we're talking about today. First of all, I want to correct some, some statements that were made. The, it is 88 units, but it is not all low income. It is a mix of market rate housing with low income or moderate income workforce housing. So it is not all low income. Second, there is, there will be work and lofts, so live-work-lofts in the same project. I have, I'm puzzled by a statement that says there's no revitalization in Frenchtown that was made earlier from, because the very houses on Carolina and Georgia were revitalization. And I was part of that when that was Carolina Arms Apartments, and some of y'all remember those. The city has spent millions of dollars in Frenchtown, and I'm glad that we have. As many of y'all know, I'm around the corner, you know? So I'm absolutely glad that we have. I did want to address that housing does not contribute to economic development. We've been trying to get commercial in, in Frenchtown now for years and years and years and years and years. The area across from the Renaissance Building, we've been holding for commercial. Nobody has wanted it. The reason nobody has wanted it is because not enough people live there to feed the commercial. You have to have increased residents to be able to, to feed commercial. You now have, on the other side of Frenchtown Pond, a massive student apartment complex that is going up on the other side of the pond. We're seeing building that's happening all over. We just got a dollar store that seemed to pop up out of nowhere. I didn't even know it was there, and turned around, it was there. Until we have more people living in Frenchtown and working in Frenchtown, you won't have support for commercial. And there's a reason why we've got vacant commercial land. Then finally, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Attorney, but I believe if we deny the easement today, it makes no difference in the project other than the Cassana's House and where the entrance is and the public parking, but this, this action does not stop the project. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I move approval.
There's a motion to approve. I'll pass the gallaudet of Commissioner Ziffer to second that motion. And I'll just, you know, to follow the comments of my colleague, one, I'll just say, I'm, I'm astonished how fearful we are of poor and working class people. And maybe it's because I was poor and was a child of working class parents. And individuals who are poor and working class don't automatically suggest a criminal element, especially when you provide jobs and opportunities to folks for them to make a way for themselves and, and make a way for their families. I am in support of the project moving forward, but frankly, even if I wasn't, I would vote for this, this evening, because the position we're in tonight is that project is going to move forward, period. The question is, is whether or not the curb cut is going to impact a home of some historic character in the neighborhood, or whether it will, it will front a street that is much more highly trafficked and, and try to keep and reduce some of the impacts on the existing, on the existing neighborhood. But just like Publix and its formula around whether it will locate in a place, they, this is, this is science. They do a radius test to see who's, how many people live in an area, what the incomes are of an area, and decide whether or not they're going to locate there based off of that. I mean, I remember when I first joined this commission and the difficult decision that was made when the Renaissance was just being opened, that was supposed to include retail and commercial on the first floor. And the heartbreak that still exists that we ended up moving because of what I was told at the time to be a lack of interest, ended up filling that space with, with workers and with employees. Now, the positive residual benefit is that there've been some, you know, mom and pop restaurants and that kind of thing that have located there that employees of the city and the county can walk to now. But we need to continue the growth and the movement of that area. And I actually think it can be done with respect for the historic character and nature of, of a place. I think we, that will be a constant fight we'll, we'll have to contend with. But I also think it can be done in respect for the need for diversified housing in our community, and that, and it's not just in the Frenchtown area. It really is, it really is all throughout our community. There are, there are differentiated housing units included in this development. Is it as many as I would like? I will admit right now, no, it isn't. I love to see more market rate housing units than I believe the eight that are included in there. I also hope that as this project moves forward, Mr. Lewis and to the neighbors, that more work can be done to make sure that we accommodate some of what are real and legitimate questions and concerns by, by neighbors, to make sure that this development comports as well as it can to the values and the quality of life that, that, that folks are becoming reintroduced to now that we've removed the, removed the homeless shelter from being such a heavy weight on that, on that particular neighborhood. I think that also can be, can be accomplished. But to put it simply, the vote tonight is not to kill this project. This project will go forward, one way or another. I believe that the amendments that will be able to be made by extending this easement will improve the project and make it better for the neighborhood. That's why I am in support of it, in addition to, to the other comments. Commissioner Curtis Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm gonna vote for the project as well. And, and I would suggest that those who are opposed to it, visit the Tampa community and see what they've done in Tampa. They've got a high-rise, low-income, high-rise in the middle of downtown Tampa. And you know what? A public shopping center will be locating there soon. If you look at what they've done in Tampa, it's amazing. What you would think is low-income housing is indistinguishable from market rate housing. You go from one side of the street to the next, and you have to ask, well, are we still in the low-income housing, or have we? It's, it's, and I think that this project can do the same thing for Frenchtown. And I'm not talking as a person who, who lives in Golden Eagle or Kalan. I live on the south side of town in a neighborhood where I've got Section 8 neighbors, and we welcomed them to our neighborhood. We, we didn't argue the fact that we had Section 8 housing. And let me tell you, you know, they, they have proven to be excellent neighbors. We don't know they're there. They blend right in with the neighborhood. We have a mix of housing in the neighborhood where I am. And I'm proud of the Tuskegee Neighborhood Association and where we live. And, and, and it's not a neighborhood of all, you know, upper-class folk, you know, working. It, it is a mixed neighborhood. We've got retirees. I've got a, a single retiree that lives next to me in, in probably 1,100 square foot home. And so, so, so I'm, I'm talking from that perspective as well. And I think that, and I have, my, my family's roots are in Frenchtown. My father went to high school at original Lincoln. He lived with my aunt and uncle, who were business owners in Frenchtown, whose house was directly across the street from the Cassanza's home. And so my father knew the, the Cassanza's family. So I'm, I'm talking from a history with Frenchtown as well, from many different perspectives. And I, I just see this project as with the student housing in Frenchtown as being a positive for that area. And, and that is how you bring about economic development. We heard it in Tampa. I met with the young lady from Pinellas County just today. She told me the only way that they were able to get those who wanted to invest in economic development in an area to do that was to, to have the right mix of people in that area. And, and this project, I think, will help us to achieve that at this point. And so that's why I'm, I'm gonna support the project.
Thank you. Commissioners, Michael Parkal will come to make a quick clarification on the-
Just one, and just one additional condition that we've talked with the developer that he's willing to, to accept would be that this easement would be conditional upon the full execution of their, completion of their project, which would also include, as part of the transaction on the land, that the CDC, in part of the sale, and the city would receive back the full outstanding debt that's owed on the property as part of the transaction when the CDC sells the property, the LLC. And that would all be tied and happen simultaneously with the execution of the easement.
How much is that?
682,000.
That doesn't cover all the other money they owe us.
That's plenty this type of work.
Because they owe us about 1.3 million. Correct?
Yes.
Got it. Commissioners, there's no additional comment. There's a motion and a second to approve. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes 3 to 1. Commissioner Nancy Miller abstaining. Commissioners, now to the items for city commission. We have the reappointment to the Downtown Improvement Authority. That's-
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11.02, appointment, reappointments to the airport advisory.
So moved.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 11.03 has been moved to policy formation. Item 11.04, approval resolution 16-r-25. This item is sponsored here by Commissioner Ziffer. Shall I yield to you, sir, or to staff?
No, I can do this. It only, it's not gonna take very long. The Suwannee River Basin, well, first of all, all around the state, there are communities realizing that if they, they work together, they have far greater chance of success when it comes to grants and other things of that nature than if they fight each other. The first one, the best examples in southeast Florida were Palm Beach County, Mayby Dade, Broward, and Monroe County used to fight over dollars for water projects. And several years ago, they got together and realized, wow, if we work together, we might do a better job. And what ended up happening was, they would sit down and they would decide which area had a better opportunity for a different project. And they ended up gaining about twice the federal dollars and other dollars available to them they were getting before. Hence, the Florida League of Cities and one of my colleagues, our current president, Matt Cersey, pushed for other areas to develop these regional compacts. So Suwannee has developed one. Granted, we're not very close to Suwannee, but we do, when you consider Jefferson County have a connectivity to, and are connectivity to them, all the counties are involved. Those areas have a lot of trails. They have a lot of pull for opportunities for tourism, but they're missing hotel rooms. They have very few places for people to stay. And so the idea is, is that by teaming up with them and providing information to them on what we can do, there's a better opportunity for us to improve our tourism from basically off some of the things they're doing. And in turn, they can probably help with some of the things we're doing. There's no commitment to dollars. There's just basically this point of commitment to trying to work together, to assist each other in doing a better job of drawing tourists in. And that's what that is.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Move approval.
There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes 4 to 0. Item 11.06, Commissioners, is, I sponsored that item. It is a resolution to request approval by this board to support the requests by Bethel's Ready-for-Work Tallahassee Reentry Programs Application for State Community Contribution Tax Credits. This item was referenced during the last budget process in their request for funding, which I support. However, this is not a designation of funding. It is a sponsorship of, for a request going toward the state. I hope you all will look fondly on the request.
Move approval.
There's a motion? There's a motion and a second to approve. All those in favor, let it be known by saying-
Mr. Mayor?
Yes?
I, at the appropriate time, I, I would imagine it would be at the end of the agenda. I would like to ask, concerning the funding for the reentry program, because that was identified as a priority, I thought, by several of us, if not all of us, at the previous budget workshop prior to today, and I, I don't think it's included in the budget.
And, and I know you had a couple of other items that were carryovers from the budget, so we'll, we'll be sure to revisit that. Commissioners, there is a motion and a second on the floor. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. 11.07, approve the selection of one representative by the commission to be appointed to the Tallahassee Land and County Commission on the Status of Women, Women. And I'm gonna yield to Nancy-
No.
Commissioner Gilzner.
Me. I would like to appoint Leslie Smith. Leslie has been in Tallahassee since 1998. 1998, she has a graduate, undergraduate degree education, leadership Tallahassee Class 24, member KCCI, Ronald McDonald House Board, Christmas Connection, the Shelter, second hour, I mean, this, she is a community person. And she also brings some, some marketing skills to the, the commission that I think would be invaluable to them. She's very direct, I will tell you that. And it would be a great honor for me to be able to appoint her to this. So I move her name to be appointed to the commission.
Second.
There's a motion and a second. No further discussion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now on to introduction of ordinances.
Item number 12.01 is the introduction of ordinance number 16-the-20. The first and only public hearing on this ordinance will be held on September 28th at 6:00 PM in City Hall. The title of the ordinance is "An Ordinance of the City of Tallahassee, Florida Designated and Including Additional Territory as an NCP Commercial Parkway on the Official Zoning Map of the City of Tallahassee, Adopted and Established by the City. Commission Provided for Conflicts and Several Ability." Mayor, I'd like to have this deemed to be introduced.
As a, without objection, show the item introduced. Commissioners, we're actually going to go into recess and reconvene in a few moments. I apologize. I apologize.[460.28]
A minute's over on the start of our public hearing. This is the portion of the meeting where we move through our public hearing items, and I want to yield the mic to the city attorney to walk us, I'm sorry, the treasurer clerk to walk us through that.
Public hearing.
So, the city attorney will take you through the public hearings. I'll let you know when there are speakers on any of these items. City attorney, sorry.
Yeah. First, let me say for the record that we had ordinance number 16-0-21 that was previously advertised as a public hearing for tonight. It was introduced on July the 6th, but it had, the public hearing has been postponed. It was not advertised for tonight, so it will take place at a later date and will so be advertised. Item number 1501 is first and only public hearing on resolution 16-R-20. It's a resolution vacating and abandoning a paved, unimproved right-of-way on South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard located adjacent to 117 South Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard in the city of Tallahassee.
There are no speakers on this item. Commissioners, this is the first and only public hearing. There's a motion to approve. And a second, if there are no questions, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes 4-0. Commissioner Miller out of chamber.
Item number 15.02 is ordinance number 16-Z-09. It's the second and final public hearing on an ordinance entitled, an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designated and including additional territory as an end university transition on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission. Any speakers?
No speakers on this item. There's a motion and a second to approve item 15.02. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes 5-0. Item 15.03.
Item 1503 is ordinance 16-Z-15. It's the first and only public hearing and the final public hearing on an ordinance of the city of Tallahassee, Florida, designated and including additional territory as an end residential reservation two with historical preservation overlay on the official zoning map of the city of Tallahassee, adopted and established by the city commission.
We have one speaker on this item, Mayor. That's Delitri Hollinger. As with the other earlier portion of our meeting, he'll have three minutes for remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Treasurer. Well, let me say that I am extremely excited that this process has gotten as far as it is. We've already began the process of listing the house on the National Register of Historic Places, and I'd like to thank Mia Gillum for attending the Aquilina Howell dinner on his anniversary weekend. I would like to thank Commissioners Richardson and Ziffer for participating in that. I would like to thank City Manager Fernandez. I'd like to thank Pat McCray. I'd like to thank Courtney Zapata, Sandra Manning, many, many people that I would like to thank who thought it not robbery to attend. Reese Gold, Reese Gold, Reese Gold, I saw you there. Everyone who was involved in that, making that a success. But Mrs. Hollie, I don't have to suspect too much. I know that many of you sitting up here knew her. I know for a fact that Commissioner Maddox and Commissioner Richardson knew her very well, and she definitely made a tremendous impact on this community as the first woman to serve as Assistant Superintendent of Schools, but really playing a very positive and instrumental role in bringing about the peaceful desegregation of our local school system. And very well-known, very well-respected, so, and this is as a part of a larger effort to list the other homes in the Florida A&amp;M subdivision on the local register and eventually have that declared as the National Historic District. So, thank you, thank you all very much. Thank you.
Excellent. Delitri, you did a flawless job in producing that inaugural event in honor of Ms. Aquilina Howell. Commissioners, if there's no additional comments, is there a motion? There's a motion and a second to move approval. All in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Commissioners, we'll now return to the policy formation and direction. I'll yield the floor to the city manager for item 13.01.
Commissioners. Sir?
He inquired if this was a three-minute rule for you.
Well, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak to you about the reorganization plan. There's been a lot of discussion about it, and I thought it would be a good opportunity for me to lay it out for you, the way it worked, the thought that went into it, the results, and the conclusions. Our objectives in your organization, starting in November, when you were gracious enough to appoint me to the city manager position, right away we began talking about the organization, what it looked like, things that we could do better, things that could be improved. Us with any organization over a period of time, we start thinking about things from our perspective, and I thought we had done that a little bit. So, we charged ourselves with thinking and recognizing and flowcharting and talking about from the customer back to us. What services does this customer receive from us, and how do we provide that service? You know, whether it be street cleaning, you know, we always ran into the issue that if something was left on the side of the road, and I know you've had a lot of these, and then internally we would figure out who was going to pick it up. Is it right-of-way? Is it solid waste? Is it in front of a house? Is it on the side? Where is it? Is it in private property? So, those sort of things is like, hey, we need to be lean and we need to be able to provide those things. Same thing with the patents. A lot of the things you heard about before today were some of the things that we struggled with about, how do we fix that? How do we lean the organization to make it work and bring these objectives that you see up there to bear? Those were sort of our guiding principles. We wanted to be efficient. We wanted to save costs. We wanted to provide our customers service. So, when we went through it, this is where we ended up. We, and you'll see the flowchart in a minute, but we wanted to be, the customers receive, number one, citizens and customer service on the upper right. That's everything that services the customers receive from us. Every department that interacts with the customer directly, we wanted to put in one bucket. So, what it ended up is all your enterprise funds are in there along with the airport, and at the beginning, obviously Parks and Rec was in that bucket. But the more we thought about what our objectives were over on the community engagement and public safety sector, was that Parks and Rec felt better, it fit better to be in the police department, with the police department, and the fire department, and CDA, and emergency services. If we're trying to implement the community policing concept, what better way of having one person be responsible for all of that? Not that it couldn't work anywhere else, because we argued a lot about that. If we're trying to promote teamwork where everybody is responsible for everybody else's problems, anyone's problems are everybody's problems. And that's sort of the way we approach these things. So, we broke him out that way. As you can see, community engagement and public safety ended up with over 900 employees. Basically, each one of these is a little, small city in itself. Citizens and Customer Services, 1,500 employees and over $550 million in budget. That is a middle city. Development Services and Economic Vitality, $200 million in projects, and obviously all trying to streamline, continue to streamline, all our development services, provide that one-on-one customer service to our developers, our environmentalists, so everybody knows where to go and what to do. And continue to talk to the customer about, what do we need to do? I mean, you heard Karen talk about the expedited permitting before, and that was one of the things that we had on our side, thinking from our way, is, hey, we only have capacity to do X, so we'll cap it there. And we said, no. If the demand is there, we told the customers, this is expedited permit, let them all come in, and we need to figure out how to make that work. And they did. I mean, Karen's done a great job, and I commend her for it, as well as Wayne Tetter, who led the effort. And then our administrative and professional services, that's our internal control, that's all our accounting, you know, it's sort of blind to us, but we issue five, I believe, financial statements in this government. Those are audited financial statements that must go through that process, must be controlled throughout the year. So, basically, they are controlling that many organizations with themselves. Be quick and take you through the departmental changes. We had the Department of Public Works before, and as you can see, that was split into three departments. So, the majority of the employees went to the Underground Utilities and Public Infrastructure. Todd Rose talked about that earlier. Traffic Engineering went to Electric Utility. Neither one of them could figure out why it went there, but it went there, it's great synergy. They're all, they couldn't be happier, and they're trying to be innovative and cross-train, and the employees are definitely buying into this, and I'm very, very proud of them. And the Community Beautification and Waste Management is your old solid waste and then all your right-of-way maintenance. That is where, where I talked about before of things being left on the side of the road. Now, Reginald Fourney can't point to anybody else, he's got to take care of it. And the same thing with the constant complaint about, hey, we're having garbage this week, and the street sweeper's there. Little things, right? Big things to me, big things to a lot of us. So, the street sweeper's come through, the garbage cans are on the curb, they go around it, then when you pull back, there's stuff all over underneath where it was. No more. Well, it could happen. Actually, I saw it one day, and I called Reginald, and he says, well, we're still trying to figure it out. And they have. From what I can tell, I have not received a complaint since, I think, February was the last complaint I got about, hey, you have the street sweeper's in my neighborhood and the garbage is here. So, now, when the street sweeper comes through, every curb is clean. Small things, I think, big things, and it's what you have directed me to do is to make the city beautiful and make it special. Environmental Policy and Energy Services, a department that was high-functioning, and we had a lot of discussion about whether it should stay as a department, and we came down on the side of splitting it and eliminating it and moving the functions between Administrative and Professional Services and Community Relations. Economic and Community Development, the same thing. We split that up into Development Services and Administration and Professional Services, and then we combine Workforce Development and Human Resources into a high-functioning department that will lead us to not only, again, hopefully be the employer of choice in the state of Florida, but also have the best training program in the state of Florida. We are working through that, trying to get more of an online, web-based training curriculum that is directed at the individual and is not as generalized as we had in the past. Administrative Services and Information Technology, that is bringing, that is bearing a lot of fruit for us these days. We had our information technology assets scattered throughout the organization. Little by little, these things just seem to organically grow, and so we went through, had an inventory, talked to everybody about, hey, this makes more sense to have it in one centralized unit that will provide the services. Because the argument was, well, once it goes into the big bureaucracy, then we're paying for it, but we're not getting the service. And I said, no, you're going to get the service, let's just move them all into one area, and you will continue to pay for it, but now you will get the service. And some areas made a lot of sense to leave one system matter expert there. Our Financial Systems was one of them, where this person is inside the system on a daily basis, so there's very little downtime. But now, wherever the fire is, or wherever the need is, or the objective of the government, that's where the resources go. We saw that recently with the E-plus online. So, a lot of people that had been different places before got together in a room and made it happen, and now they're on to the next big thing, and a group is responsible for maintaining that app and improving the app as we get feedback from our customers or as we notice things. So, here is the old organizational chart. As you can see, all those, all those items in red, all those were positions, senior management positions, that were eliminated during the reorg. As we reorg, positions were eliminated and shifted around, and those 10 were eliminated during the process. We then ended up with our new organizational chart. And every position that is highlighted is one where the folks were promoted to. I know we've heard a lot about raises and, you know, terms have a way of catching a life of their own, but nobody there is doing today what they were doing in January. All these folks have either been promoted to those positions, well, everybody on the executive team was not on the executive team, was not an Assistant City Manager. Every Deputy and Assistant City Manager had other positions, lower positions, in January. So, we promoted them to these positions. Everybody else, they may have the similar title, or be in the similar box, but everybody assumed a lot more responsibilities for what they do. And if you bear with me, I will go through some of the comparables that we used, and so you can see, it's hard to see, but you have a, you have a printout there. So, for example, I'll take you through a few and skip some. So, the Deputy City Manager position are comparables for organizational chart. Now, you know that our city provides more service, services than any city in the state of Florida, bar none. We are a full-blown utility and provide customer services that nobody else provides, and we've done the charts, and we just provide more. So, the Deputy City Manager position is in charge of not only the utilities, but again, everything that faces the customer. So, that person is also in charge of the airport, the transit system, but now the Parks and Rec Department. And as you can see, the comparables there, from Lakeland at $209,000 to Jacksonville at $437,000. So, those are the comparable numbers for someone that would do, I would argue, less than this position would do. Now, obviously, we are where we are, and we have an entire organization. Because we do so many things, we've got to have consistency and equity within our pay structure, or we would have imbalance. I mean, and at some points in time, we all, every organization gets to an imbalance, because you make decisions to keep somebody that then puts him at a different level than everybody else, and what we, I thought we had here was an opportunity to bring equity across the organization. The General Manager of Electric is the next position you see there, and you can see that anyone our size, it ranges all the way to 404,000 for Jacksonville, and Fort Pierce, who is very small, is at 150, but most of these are above the position that we've targeted at 175. General Manager of Underground Utilities, we could not find, obviously, anything that looked like this, like what we have. So, this person is in charge of four utilities. So, he's got water, he's got sewer, he's got stormwater, he's got gas, in addition to what would be a Public Works Department for most cities. He's got about a half of a Public Works Department, I would say. So, that, we had to sort of slot into a position that we thought was fair, because there's nothing comparable. So, in any organization, what this person does is done by at least three people, because nobody is in charge of water, sewer, gas, stormwater, and Public Works. Generally, you're going to have someone in charge of water and sewer, someone in charge of gas, someone in charge of stormwater, and then Public Works, obviously, it's its own animal. So, the process we went through is, in positions like this, you try to slot as close as you can to the next one. And the same thing with the Assistant City Managers. West Palm Beach was at 200, and everybody else, as you can see, was below where we slotted this position. The reason we slotted that position there is for, again, organizational equity and trying to say, you have a Director of Electric, and you have a Director of Underground at a certain level, the Assistant City Manager should be at that level. And the Chief Customers Officer, Chief Customer Officer, again, there you have from 130 to 195, and we slotted that position on the lower end. And I would say, on a lot of these positions, including this one, not only would you have this position in JEA, or OUC, or KUA, but you will have the same position in the city of Jacksonville, the city of Orlando, the city of Kissimmee. In our organization, you have one person doing it for both of us. You saw some of the, some of the results today in your presentation. The Director of Growth Management, that, we didn't even survey, we just slotted that position along with the Chief Customer Service and tried to establish a base of like salaries for like functions and like responsibilities. The Technology and Innovations, similar to the Customer Service Officer, generally you find that position in multiple parts of the organization. In either case, you can see the comparables quite support the salary that's listed there on the far right-hand side. Same thing with Human Resources. These are all strictly government entities. There's no accountability here for the utilities, in any case, with the exception of, I believe, Gainesville may have shared responsibilities, but everybody else just does it for the government. And in those cases, in our case, is the government plus the utility, plus the training. It's not just the human resources element of it, but now you've got equity, workforce, development. So, you have all equity issues, any complaints coming from the workforce, whether they'd be personnel issues, or whether it would be equity issues, flow through the same funnel. Director of Environmental Services and Facilities, that was another position that you couldn't find anywhere else, but I will tell you that the Director of Environmental Services in any, just electric utility, would be highly compensated. This is the person that's responsible for all your permits, all your power plant emissions, following up on any accidents, following up on any spills. So, with the exception of stormwater, this person is responsible for all our utilities, and then assists stormwater with the various permits. In addition to those duties, we have given this person the responsibility for all city facilities. We do not, you know, you heard John talked about not having a asset-based management system for our roads and our sidewalks. Similarly, we don't have that sort of system for our facilities. So, every budget of every department in the past, and including the one you have before you today, because we're not that far off, not far along, has its own maintenance budget, rather than having a centralized system that has an inventory and a schedule of maintenance for all city facilities. It is a great asset, it's a very valuable asset, and so in the past, we were asking a rec center director to remember when to change the air conditioning filters. So, we've addressed that over the last year or so, and having a maintenance company address some of that, but then you have the other thing. I mean, when do you, when do you change, when do you check this? When do you check deployment? When do you change the mechanical? When do you check it? Those are things that should all be centralized, and you should have a system that sort of tells you when you're going to do this, and you should have a partner that does it for you. So, big job, he keeps telling me, but that's something that we hope we can get done within the next year. The Environmental Services part is an important part, the facilities, in my opinion, is, has a lot of long-range benefits. The Director of Community Relations, you can see that the comparables there are in line, and similarly with Communications, just try to slot it in the middle of that. The Assistant to the City Manager, we did that for equity in that there's nobody that does the kind of things that our Assistant to the City Manager does, and that is handle all the commission requests, all the commission interaction on an administrative level, and obviously just taking care of almost anything that needs to be taken care of, including citizen services. So, as a result, I think we addressed all our objectives of efficiency, teamwork, accountability, diversity, and reduce cost, and I will talk that, I mean, you see it up there. So, at the end of the day, once you, if you remember those red, those red titles up there, where we eliminated all those management positions, if you take that number and you reduce the number by which we increase the salaries for the people that were either A, promoted, or B, took on substantial more responsibilities, the net savings to the organization was over $900,000. We're conservative of that, it's closer to $1 million, but just in case we missed a number, we put 900,000. So, again, you take the elimination and you reduce the increases, and the savings is $900,000. I think that's why, so I'm comfortable where we are from an organizational standpoint and the changes we've made and where we want to move forward. I will tell you that the team we have, and, you know, some people have argued, well, why didn't you go outside? I didn't want to go outside. I think that we have the people with the passion and the vision to make this work. The people on the executive team, the people on the leadership team have shown me that they want to move forward. They want to move forward in a different way, they want to move forward with that passion and that vision, and thinking of the customer, from the customer perspective rather than from our perspective. And it's getting along, and I ran into a crew yesterday, and they are TVing more lines than they ever have before. And they said, boy, and this was a crew that came over to Mike's group, he said, I didn't realize how efficient this could be, that you could just move from one to, that'd be scheduled for you, rather than you having to go hunt problems. So, very proud of them. Having said all of that, and how proud I am of that, I do want to recognize to you, you know, from the bottom of my heart, I apologize to the commission, I apologize to the organization. I think that the way this was rolled out, the way it was done, I screwed up. That's my problem, I did it, and again, I apologize to you, and all I can tell you is that it won't happen that way again on anything. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Manager. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Ziffer, followed by me.
Our charter does not give us the ability as elected officials to second-guess the inner workings of the appointed officials. What our charter gives us the ability to do is to hire and fire the appointed officials and try to find the best people for the job. Leaders lead by example. Leaders lead from the front. The fact that the city manager just looked us in the eye and said, I apologize, I screwed up, but here's why I made this decision. He made his decision based on good information. It may not have been the decision that all of us would have made, it may not have been handled the way that all of us would have handled it, but that's what a leader does, and you can feel leadership in an organization when you've got a strong leader at the helm. I stand in support of the manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, and I'll say this first. I was on vacation in Boston, Massachusetts, reading The Tallahassee Democrat when I learned about all of this. So, to say the least, I was upset, because then I had a reporter call me, well, what do you think about this? And I'm like, I don't know what to think. This is the first I'm hearing of it. And then I get back, and this is the talk of the town. It's everywhere. Everywhere I went in the city, that's what people were talking about. I went, I had a staff retreat on my job these last couple of days, and I walk into the room, first thing they, well, Curtis, we want to come work for the city of Tallahassee so we can get those big raises y'all giving out over there. Like, okay. And so, but I do have- And so, but I do have full faith and confidence in our city manager. I think, and he and I had this discussion, I certainly think it was rolled out the wrong way. I think we let some people get ahead of us again, as we did with the budget last year. And this will not get written about. I can almost guarantee you, this won't get written about. This won't be the conversation of the hair salon and the barber shop and on my job. This won't be the conversation, but this is good stuff. But we, it was rolled, and Mr. Manager, I certainly do accept your apology, and I would just hope that this would be the last time we have to go through this, that we roll out something this, of this importance, the way this has been rolled out. I think you've done a phenomenal job of streamlining the organization through your reorganization. I have all the confidence in the world, I think you've got some, an exemplary leadership team that were due the raises that they were given. I don't question that at all, especially in light of this, coming into today's meeting, like people in the community, I've had some questions. But in light of what you now have provided me, rather than what I'm getting from other sources, I completely support the reorganization and how you determined how those people would be compensated for the work that they do. So I have no problem with that at this point, but again, I just hope that in the past, I'm sorry, in the future, that we will be as transparent as possible and that when we go through these kinds of exercises, that we're kept in the loop, so that when this comes to us, we're not backpedaling and trying to defend something that we don't have the information on. But again, I have full faith and confidence in your leadership, your leadership team, and I think that we are, if not one of the, if not the best, certainly one of the best-run cities in the state of Florida, and I'm proud to be a part of the leadership team of the city of Tallahassee. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir.
I would far prefer to be in this position where my city manager may have unfortunately handled something a certain way, but for all the right reasons, and we ended up with a great situation, rather than the city manager that handled it perfectly at the beginning but had bad people and it was a bad operation and it was handled poorly from that point on. We're in much better shape. I think if anything, maybe what this demonstrated is that some of our folks weren't quite at the level they should have been. So as you've taken responsibility, I have no problem taking responsibility for having you work and continue to work for us, because I think you're doing a great job as our city manager and I'll stand behind that.
Well, first of all, I have a question and then I have a comment. My question is, is Pat McCray the director of building services?
What?
Because you left her out.
No. She's assistant to the city manager.
Okay, that's what I want to be clear about, because I had that.
See, it's hard to even know what she does, right?
Well, she does so much, yeah, and she's really helping to make all of us very comfortable too, so I really appreciate that. You know, I was also on vacation whenever I started getting alerts on my phone, not even reading the newspaper, and I thought, you know, Rick, I've told you, I hate to read about things in the newspaper. And so we've subsequently had the opportunity to have quite extensive discussions on the topic. And, but this, as everyone knows by now, this was the step one, it's too bad it came at the end, but this was step one and from now on, this will be, I trust, step one, where we go forward and say, this is what's happening, this is the way everything's being reorganized. And, because we actually need to know, there are times when, I had, just tonight, was referring folks to somewhere and saying, well, I'm not sure exactly which department that's in. And so this, and then that led into the discussion of the new added responsibility and the consolidation of work. One thing I want you to address, one of the big complaints I've heard is that, that, oh, but these raises are unsustainable over the long period because of the benefits and so on, but what I understand is that you have eliminated a significant number of staff and pension and 401K obligation, and then these folks got basically a raise, well, they got a promotion and then they got a raise, but it isn't, even considering all that, all of this 900,000 is savings at the end of the day. Is that my understanding?
That's true.
All right, thank you. And that is all I had to say.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner and Commissioners, and City Manager, thank you for a very informed, informed presentation. This is what I say, I knew. What I knew was when you sent us an email indicating that you had reorganized the government and saved us nearly a million dollars, I knew that it didn't come out of thin air, that you had to make some difficult choices and some realignments and it impacted real people who lost their jobs or were reassigned out of the government, but it also added additional responsibilities to the folks who were going to be remaining. And, you know, I knew that wasn't magic money, but you described it as money that this government would reap the benefits of over the long term. I appreciate your apology, but I think the community probably appreciates it more. My big regret is that, I hope that whatever damage has been done by virtue of the process that was undertaken, that people will continue to trust your good work and judge you by the work you do and the impact that this reorganization will have for the benefit of the citizens of our, of our, of our community. One of the exceptions I will take with the way it has been covered is, and I appreciate you mentioning it up there in your presentation, was that these were in large part raises given to individuals, and my first question was, if these were positions that you would have advertised for people outside of this community, outside of this government, from anywhere around the country or the world to apply for, what would be the fair wage that you would pay them for the work that they would do? And would these be the wages that they would earn if they were coming from outside this community? Your answer to that was yes. And based off the evidence that you showed, your answer was yes, because you all went through a very methodical process of assessing pay schemes and bandwidths for each of the positions that you were advertising. And I think that was a smart approach to take. What I would encourage, if you haven't already, and I imagine you have, but that you continue to spread, you know, what you bought through this process is a lot more work for yourself to communicate to the public about your thought process and making this decision, and I would encourage you to continue to get out and to do that, because I think reasonable-thinking people will hear what it is that you have to say. And even if there is some personal envy there or, you know, arriving at a different conclusion, at least they'll be able to understand and track why you made the decisions that you made and to respect that hopefully at the end of the day. And then the other thing I would encourage is that this is, that your staff also, and I mean not just the ones that operate in City Hall, but throughout this government, need to hear from you along these lines. Prior to you becoming city manager, and I imagine you've tried to keep up with this as a practice, as you have served as city manager, one thing for sure I knew about Rick Fernandez is whether you were the trash collector or the street sweeper or the security officer in the building or the administrative assistant or the city manager of the city, that Rick always made an effort to have his pulse on what was happening and what is going on up and down and throughout the government. And I think our employees appreciate that of you, and I would make space if I were you, and I know space is a lot of what you have and time, but I would make time to do that, because if they were reading in the paper like many of us were reading in the paper, they may feel a certain way. And I think that to the extent that you can help assuage that a little bit and remind them that you're still Rick from the block and that you are still in tune with the needs and the sensitivities of the folks who work very, very diligently and very, very hard in this government, I think they'll go a long way to help and to reassure you there. And lastly, like my colleagues, I have full and complete faith in your role as our city manager. I support you 1,000% until or unless you show evidence otherwise. But having worked with you and observed you, I don't expect an otherwise. I expect you to continue to be the top-notch professional that you've been for this community and for this government, and Rick Fernandez, I wish you well.
You too.
Commissioners, if there are no other questions or comments on this item, we'll move on to item 13.02. That was for information purposes only.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Item 13.02 is the approval of amendments to enter local agreements to effectuate the designation of Blueprint as the City and County Economic Development Organization, establishment of the Tallahassee Leon County Office of Economic Vitality. Move approval.
There's a motion and a second. Commissioner Miller.
Well, you know, in studying this, I had to spend some time with the, with the legal staff, because there were some questions that I had related to this agreement, and that has all been worked out. But I have one remaining point that I need to bring to everyone's attention, and that is this. We have a Citizens Advisory Committee with Blueprint and we also have a citizen, an Economic Development Citizens Committee, EDCC it's called. On those two committees, there are, is a lot of redundancy and what that mean, and that in addition to the redundancy, there are people on those committees who are definitely going to be coming to their own committee asking for part of the economic development money. So that is a conflict of interest to me, but the fact that they would be able to go to one committee and ask for money from themselves and then yet go to another committee and ask for more money for themselves, and then the IA gets the recommendation from the two committees, made up often of the same person representing the same organization, gives me a tremendous amount of pause. I can't, I can't support that sort of thing. So in talking with Ben and Wayne, it seems that this can be dealt with in the bylaws, but the same person cannot be sitting on both of those committees. Is that something that sounds reasonable to you? So I would hope that we can go forward as we roll all this out and make absolutely sure that. I have still got the heartburn about the same organization being on both of them, but we'll see how that works out and if we can at least make this little degree of progress on this, I'd appreciate that.
So noted, Commissioner. If there are no other comments on this item, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
For those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.03.
Yes, sir. There's an update and discussion on using Star Metro to provide transportation to Leon County High School students. We've talked to you a couple of times about that and staff has met with Leon County school officials to discuss it further, making Star Metro transportation available to Leon County students. A pilot program was discussed, this issue is a priority for Leon County schools and Superintendent Jackie Ponce has expressed as much, and I believe he has a representative here to speak to the item.
Mr. Mayor, if I could, well, I asked Mr. Pridgen to come, who I believe is assistant superintendent, I don't know what your title is, but to update you, when, and update the watching, the viewing public, when the Leon County School Board made the very good decision to institute later start times for high school students based on the empirical data that shows that later start times helps kids learn better, something that any parent of a teenager or someone who has been a teenager knows. Unfortunately, due to their budget constraints, they only offered it for those that had transportation currently, not to the transportation dependent. This body stepped forward to use Star Metro as a stopgap to assist those students that wished to take advantage of the later start times but did not have transportation. The reason it's back on our agenda is because we wanted to make sure that this could happen in time for the fall school year, and we asked for it to come back based on that, and we had not gotten a definitive answer from the school district. These folks are here today to give us the answer.
Thank you. I'm Randy Pridgen, I'm over K-12 schools now. And we're going through the same thing, so I used it to do just secondary, but now I'm doing elementary as well. And I have Dr. Michael Moore with me, who's director of transportation. As Commissioner Maddox said, this was a ground swell that we had of parents who had done some research about the effects of getting up early in the morning and how that has an effect on your grades. And as you know, if you've been around in our system, we'd be around the seven-day period. When I was in high school, we had six here and you know, some of your kids, I know you've all had kids here, you may have had a seven, an optional seven, so we've done a lot of different things with our schools. The parents approached us, as you know, they did a My View article, and they approached us about what can we do to make this happen, where we have a later start time. And as Dr. Moore can tell you, the transportation, how many miles do we do a year?
Seven million miles.
A year in transportation, and we have so many special routes that we accommodate kids with, so it's a very big budget item that we have. So when we met with this group, we formed a committee, it's been going on over a year now, and we explained to them, we had high school principals in there, and we came up with this solution based on the budget we had that we could afford to put these opportunities back there, part of that transportation we just really couldn't provide. So this time, I want to thank you, Commissioner Maddox, I know you saw that need that we had, to reach out to us and have this partnership. We couldn't do what we do in our school system without partnerships with the city of Tallahassee and our Leon County government, Leon County Commission. There's a lot of programs that we have that we share staff with and programs with, and this is one of them, and I thank you for your leadership and reaching out to us. I know a lot of you, we have mentor programs that you're involved with, the arts, I even asked one commissioner to tutor one of my principals on human relations, and he's done a great job with that. So we really reach out to you a lot, and this is another thing that you've done with us. We will, what we're doing right now, I'll give you a breakdown of what we're doing. Our high school principals are finalizing schedules. We'll know how many are going to actually take advantage of this option within the next two weeks. And then we're going to work with the transfer, Mr. Dr. Moore and your Star Metro person, we're going to get together and see what best works in the fall with our principals and we're going to, we're going to roll this program out with your help. So at that time, do you have anything, Michael, you want to add?
No. We've been meeting with Terry Low and his staff for the past month, conclusions and route and times.
It looks, looks very promising and we just continue to work it out and try to massage it some more.
So will this start in August?
We think we'll start in August, right?
Yes, yes, we will go in August. And like I say, we're finalizing schedules, so we don't know right now, we know, when we budgeted this in, we didn't know how many were going to take advantage of it. Some of the schools will have a lot, some will not have as many. So, but we'll know those in the next couple of weeks and then we'll start finding a way of how we're going to communicate this to our kids. It'll run through our schools, individual schools, we'll probably put one of our dean of students over working with these kids individually to get them, as this need arises. But like I said, on behalf of superintendent of school, we thank you for reaching out, seeing this problem and helping us with it. So if you have any other questions or...
Thank you all very much for coming.
Yes, thank you. Thank you for the, the, next item is, I don't, I'm sorry. Terry, was there anything? Mr. Low?
Angela. Do you want to add anything? Couple of words, thanks to Commissioner Maddox's leadership this morning, we were able to bring this to an end. There was never even question whether we were going to participate, we weren't going to participate, we just had to figure out what the logistics were to help Leon County and help the kids. And within the parameters of our system, we'll be picking up or taking home kids, students that want to start late or stay late in schools, so we're really happy to be able to participate with Leon County schools and give another transportation option to these students. Thank you, Commissioner, for helping us out.
Thank you, Mr. Low. Yes, sir.
13.04 is Airport Master Plan Update. This update began on August 19, 2015, with Michael Baker International as our consultant. The project is approximately 30 percent complete, having had the first technical advisory committee and public meetings which took place two months ago. Chris Curry will introduce Mr. Jefco from Michael Baker to provide you with an update.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager-appointed officials. I'm here to introduce Mr. Philip Jefco from Baker International. Baker International was hired to lead the airport through the very complex master planning process. The master planning process for the airport is intended to address the 20-year development plans for the airport. Normally, these plans are updated every five to six years. Our last plan was updated in 2009. So they're updated either based on a timeframe or if significant changes happen within the airport environment. So I'll bring Mr. Jefco up to provide you with the presentation, and we will both be available to answer questions if you have any.
Thank you for the opportunity to come before you, give you a quick update of our planning process, and we hope to be back here periodically throughout our process to keep you engaged in the master plan. This afternoon, this evening, I'll be talking a little bit about our process we've gone through, our public involvement program, which has been robust, and we engage the members, stakeholders within the community as well as members of the local community through our public involvement process. I'll talk a little bit about the steps that we're going through and we've gone through to date and what our next steps are. So our master plan, as Mr. Curry mentioned, takes a snapshot of the next five, 10, and 20 years. We look into the future, and primarily, it's to guide the airport and some of those large strategic decisions that need to take place, especially when we're looking at input from agencies such as the Federal Aviation Administration and the Florida Department of Transportation, key stakeholders and our partners in funding capital improvements here at the airport, Tallahassee International Airport. The other part of this, this go-around, is to look at some of the key improvements that we need to make, some of the uses, the highest and best use of available property, and of course, the nuts and bolts, the airfield, the terminal process, access to and from the airport, and the support facilities that keep our airport going daily. The master planning process is a formulaic approach that is supported by the FAA and DOT. We go through an inventory of existing conditions to determine what we have out there today, support that with a forecast of demand so that we can get approval from the FAA that gives us a forecast that will support those future needs. And from those needs, we'll be determining expectations and different alternatives to reach some of those critical needs over that 20-year period. Then they'll formulate, from alternatives, we'll look at a capital improvement program and put that into an airport layout plan and report that will be used to support the FAA and DOT funding mechanisms. Now, Mr. Curry mentioned earlier in my introduction that we have had public involved during this process, and that public involvement is not only members of our technical advisory committee, consisting of key stakeholders throughout the community, some of them are here today, as well as our airport advisory committee, who we just gave a recent update this afternoon, and then, of course, yourselves. But also, we welcome the public and we engage them early on so that we can get their input. During the last go-around and that last master plan, I was the project manager, and we're doing things much differently this time around to get that input, well-needed input, early in the process and keep everyone engaged. And one way we do that is by letting everyone and steering them towards our airport project website. You could find out everything you need to know about the project at the website and get there from the airport's webpage. Our major objectives, as I mentioned earlier, are to make sure that we keep a viable facility, to make sure we're meeting the FAA's latest requirements in terms of airport development, and supporting those goals along with ideas and opportunities for some of those underutilized areas of the airport. And you see that activity going at the airport today. The master plan will be designed to support what's going on currently. So we look at these types of facilities, everything from the airfield to the support facilities that make the airport go on a daily basis. We also don't want to forget about security and the environment around us. Here's just an idea for those who haven't been out and seen the magnitude and the breadth of what we're actually looking at across the airport-wide facilities. And based on those, one more, we're also taking a good, hard look at the terminal area and access to the airport, keeping in mind some of the projects that are going on in tandem to the master planning process. We want to learn from some of those recommendations and import those into our process. We'll also consider general aviation facilities, not just the commercial aviation, as well as the support facilities that drive the airport on a daily basis. So our forecasts are currently with the FAA. They have a role in approving those so that we can use them further to go through that process I just mentioned. And we expect to hear back from the FAA shortly on approval of those forecasts. But they're designed to give a snapshot of where we can be, where we are currently, where we've been, and where we can be in the future. This is just an example of a comparison of Tallahassee against nearby Panama City Airport, taking in those kinds of changes and considerations and their impact on your facility here, for example. Looking at how Tallahassee measures up in terms of load factors, how full the planes are compared to airports like Daytona Beach, Panama City, Gainesville, Melbourne, and so on. And there is room for improvement, and there's a way to get more people on aircraft, so we want to make sure that we have those capabilities here at the airport and that we plan for that. So we've come up with a forecast that we presented to the FAA that is twofold. One, that takes into consideration the activities that we've had to date and that type of growth that we've experienced here at the airport, and the type of growth that would be expected if we were to introduce new air carrier service here in addition to what you have currently. So we're at least taking consideration for those types of milestones so that we have a plan that addresses, here's how things go today and the growth that we've experienced, and here's how it could be if we get that boost from additional service. And then here's just kind of the numbers, just to kind of share with you. These numbers are available on our website in a rather detailed report and available for the public to see. Our general aviation facilities, we don't want to miss out there. There are hangar requirements that we need to come up with, so we look at the base aircraft that are here in Tallahassee to determine needs for future hangars as well. And as we see the different changes and some aspects of aviation grow and some don't grow as we move out into the future, and a lot of that is taking into consideration some of the trends that we're seeing, not only here locally or in the region, but also nationally. So we have a combined forecast that the FAA will be approving here rather shortly. So here's where we're at right now. We're looking at the needs for the facility as we speak, based on the forecast that I just presented to you. And we'll be looking at soup to nuts, basically, here at the airport, but these are the types of facilities and types of analyses that we'll be looking at and presenting to our technical advisory committee in the August timeframe. So we've completed our first phase of this, looking at the inventory and the forecast. We're working on those facility needs as we speak, the requirements. We've heard some impact, some input from our local community and our stakeholders through our different committees and meetings that we've held. And we've actually received some comments that we'll take into consideration as we get prepared to move forward with the plan and its documentation. Here's some dates that we have as goals to get us within that 18-month period that we expect the process to be completed in. And around May of next year, we expect to wrap up this process. That takes into consideration and some assumptions that the Federal Aviation Administration and the Florida Department of Transportation will be timely in their review of our documentation. I just wanted to thank you for the opportunity, and if we have any...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Chris, any additional comments?
No comments at all. Thank you.
Well, I have one at least on your behalf. We were recently informed this weekend, I know this weekend you'll be traveling down to central Florida because you are a finalist in an award by the Florida Department of Transportation and its associated industries for the Aviation Professional of the Year in our state. You've done, and we've had the opportunity to observe you do an exceptional job at the Tallahassee International Airport, and we know that the best is still to come for our airport. But wanted to take this time to have the commission acknowledge you for this great recognition, and we wish you the very best as you go home to claim the big prize.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we're now on item 13.05. City Manager.
Commissioners, this item seeks your approval to allocate an award $71,000 to the Tallahassee Lenders Consortium to increase the contract amount for the down payment assistance program to provide sufficient funding for the remainder of the year. They've been very successful this year, and this additional funding will cover the anticipated loan demand throughout the remainder of the fiscal year.
Move acceptance.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for acceptance. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.06.
Yes, sir. This next item recommends your approval for $51,018 through the Historic Grant and Loan Program for the restoration of 420 East Call Street. This project will allow for the repair and replacement of exterior siding of the building with materials which preserve the historic integrity of the structure.
Move approval.
Second.
There's a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the motion, let it be no by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.07.
Is the approval of FY 2016-17 HUD Annual Plan?
Move approval. I'll move option one. Is that one, or what are you moving?
Staff recommendation.
Okay.
There's a motion for staff. There's a motion and a second for staff recommendation. There's no discussion, all those in favor of the item?
Staff recommendation is?
Option one.
Option one, right?
Right.
Yep.
If there's no additional conversation, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. Item 13.08.
Yes, sir. It's the approval of memorandum of agreement with Leon County for the transfer of property and acceptance of ownership and maintenance responsibilities for a stormwater management facility. Meadow Ridge is a proposed subdivision within the city limits under design on Buck Lake Road west of Pedrick. The development of BUDS, a Leon County-maintained stormwater management facility constructed as part of the Buck Lake Road improvement several years ago. The developer originally planned to construct a stormwater pond immediately adjacent to the facility. We have negotiated with Leon County staff and determined that it would be more efficient to instead of simply enlarging the existing county, to simply enlarge the existing county facility. As a significant majority of the total treatment volume will be ours, we're recommending that all responsibility be transferred to the city for ownership and maintenance. The county will be required to make a one-time payment for 20 years' worth of maintenance caused for their portion of the pond. John Buz is here to answer any questions.
Move approval.
There's a motion for approval.
Second.
And a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously. We're now at item 13.09. City Attorney. I'm sorry, Commissioner Maddox.
I need to, I've been reading the agenda item with my new glasses. On the agenda item prior to this, the motion that we passed does not include funding for the Big Ben CDC?
Correct.
Okay. Is that, if that's a will of the commission, my only concern is, I think there's new information about dollars coming in that will pay back loans.
Is there a motion to reconsider, or?
I mean, if it's a will of the commission, not a deal that I won't, but I mean, I just, I was remiss on when I was reading it.
Same here, Mr. Mayor, and I would move that we reconsider the vote by which we passed...
There's a motion to reconsider item 13.07 in a second.
Second.
All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no.
Wait, what? What? I thought we were going to have a discussion.
We're about to open it back up.
Just to reconsider.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. It's motion to reconsider, and the motion passes. City Manager, we're going to move back up to item 13.07, and I'll, you know, open it up for discussion. Commissioner Richardson.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, what I would like, if we could have, I know we heard from him earlier, if we could have Tom Lewis come and talk to us about what the CDC does and what this funding, lack of funding would do to his organization and his ability to be successful.
Mr. Lewis, I know earlier you went through the work of the, or at least the history of the work of the Frenchtown CDC. If you want to hit on broadly the impact that Commissioner Richardson talked about?
Thank you again for the reconsideration. It's greatly appreciated. The $53,000 that is scheduled for us to get is, what, $7,000 less than we got last year? We got $60,000. And with that, we pay a person to do the pickups. I pay people in the community to help me deliver the stuff to the organizations that can't pick it up. Big Ben Cares can pick it up, pick up the donations. The Refuge House can pick it up. We have to take it to the community center. We have to take it to the home community, and this money pays for that. It pays for the community revitalization events, the feeding with our Blues and barbecue and our Memorial Day picnic. We fed over 100, or the summer, the two, we fed over 300 people from the community, had a great time. It was a, this is what I think community is about, being able to have these kind of activities. We had the movie night. It's the maintenance of the Tish Bird House, the historical house that was spoken about earlier. It's the maintenance of the Tish Bird Garden. We had that available for use by the community. We've been able to, we've had, when people discovered it, we were able to have several people, you know, asked to use it this year. We've been able to do that. So those are those resources for. There are no salaries. I, all that I do for the Big Ben CDC is volunteer. When I left the city, and I need to say this, when I left the city, I knew full well what the CDC owed the city, and as I said earlier, I made a commitment that that money would be paid back. Today, with the approval of the Cassanas Project, a $20 million project, will position the organization to pay back the $632,700. That leaves some additional money. Additional funding is $250,000 of a line of credit loan that was used by the CDC to build over 20 houses in the community since its inception. And the Big Ben CDC, we will be receiving a developer's fee for this project. We will take, out of that developer's fee, we will pay back the $250,000. So the $932,000 that the city is owed, the Affordable Housing Trust Fund will be paid If you were to add up, one final thing, if you were to add up the total value since its inception of the Big Ben CDC, formerly known as the Frenchtown CDC, the total amount of money is, given the circumstances of the day, $27 million that that organization has brought to the Frenchtown community.
Thank you. Mr. Lewis, my, the reason I supported the motion originally was when we, when I got the feedback on the kind of work that you believe the CDC will continue to do, in my own minds, I reconciled that we've got a CRA, Small Events Budget and... do, in my own minds, I reconciled that we've got a CRA, Small Events Budget, in fact, we'll be taking that up tomorrow at the CRA, for the Frenchtown area, that is really intended to help do a lot of those things. My early account of the work of the Frenchtown CDC really had a lot more to do with the development prowess of that organization. It was not so much, you know, the events that, quite frankly, I think is not the highest and best use of what a C, a community development organization ought to be doing.
And we...
So, you know, what I'll say on that is, I'm a complete endorser of the development work that you all are committed to, and that's why I voted in part for the earlier item that dealt with the kind of development work. I am concerned about the outstanding debt. Pleased that through this project coming online, that a significant portion of that will be relieved, but it's... But I think that area is certainly due for that kind of developmental work and probably a lot less of, I think, the activities-based projects, which I think can be accomplished by, through other means.
And I, Mr. Mayor, I agree. So let me comment on the development aspects. We were certified as a CHODO because we own several sites in the community, and we were awarded... We had been working with Florida A&amp;M University on developing an affordable housing model with high energy efficiency. I was working with the utility department of the city, and we were funded $300,000 that you all approved for us to do that. And we were certified as a CHODO. We had signed the construction contracts with the builder, had signed the city contract, and a decision was made to take that money from us and with a discussion about we could come back later in the year and apply for funds. But yes, our strength is development, and I couldn't agree more.
Gotcha. Commissioner Ziffer.
Just a couple of comments and maybe questions. Where else do you get funding?
We get funding from, if we're a...
Tell me, of the things that you're doing...
Right.
...the other line, are they giving for funds?
Well, we have... The city funding is what we've been using to do our projects.
So without our funding, you're out of business?
We stopped doing the Good 360 program next year. We're committed to finishing it out this year because that's our... That's the work plan that we were funded for. But we would have to make some adjustments. What, again, what we would do, based on your point, if we do development, and you can get a developer's fee for that. We will use our developer's fee, more than likely, to continue the Good 360 program because it's too important to the community, from my perspective, not to do it.
So, and it sounds like the development's going to go forward regardless, so you're going to have those funds to do these things, correct? You wouldn't need our money. Would you? I'm a little confused. And the other thing is...
Well, after I pay back the city the $250,000, we'll have to see what I have left.
Okay, I'm going to still vote... I'm going to... The original option one, I deliberately voted for because, quite frankly, I think that you need to look elsewhere for funding. I think, Donna, I think you should rely solely on us. We've made a big point with other people we fund, that we want to make sure that the city of Tallahassee is not the single source. The second thing is, I am concerned that our money is being completely utilized as it's meant to be. I think the mayor is absolutely right. I think serving as a development agency, you probably are better serving the community. So on that, I'm going to continue to vote no because I just think you need to be looking elsewhere for money. I think we need to stop being the cash cow on this. The taxpayers have already put over $1 million into this, and it's time for us to say, develop this property if you're going to do that, which I'm opposed to, but on those monies, you can operate your organization or other funds. That's my position.
And to your point, Commissioner, where we should look elsewhere for other resources, we're writing grants, plus during this development, this $20 million development provides the organization resources, and as part of it, are looking elsewhere for resources.
Commissioner Maddox, and then I'm going to ask Mr. Parker if you could come on.
Thank you. I mean, I'll be brief. I'm coming at this from a pragmatic sense. I am fully in favor of not funding people who owes money or organizations that owes money, regardless of a change of management. I understand that. From a pragmatics point of view, I want to make sure we get this 900,700 bucks on the table. So what I'm worried about, if they don't get funded to keep going, they go under, we got to litigate with them to get these dollars. I want to get these dollars into the city treasury, and then they got a year to clean up their act on this 50 grand, and if they don't clean up their act, we can ax that in the next year, but in the meantime, we put 900,700 bucks back in the city treasury that was owed to us. So that's where I'm coming from.
Got it. Mr. Parker.
Well, we've given you...
Commissioner, I wanted to... Commissioner Miller has a question.
I do. I remember that in our last conversation, well, first of all, I want to make absolutely clear in my mind that this is CDBG money that we're talking about, and our CDBG money plan for the next coming year.
Correct.
And this is a report, as I understood it, that had to be in by some certain date, and as I understood it from our last conversation, when we said we want, when there was discussion of deleting the $60,000 because we had all these questions, you said, "Well, you can't do that tonight because then I have to reallocate and come forward with a plan that you have to approve." So wouldn't that be exactly the same situation we're in now, only our next meeting is going to be in September?
Just to clarify, so tonight, we've given you three options to choose. At your last meeting, you asked us to develop a potential option that would not fund the CDC and have some other alternatives. What we do need you to do tonight is adopt an option, either one of these three or some combination of them, so that we can finalize the CRA, excuse me, the CDBG plan, so that we can submit it to HUD by August 15th, which is the deadline. With that being said, based on the feedback from your meeting on the 22nd, we gave you options to alternatively fund, use these funds for other purposes, and tonight you can choose to do that, one of these three options. And we, if you choose an option other than the one that was advertised, which was originally what you considered on the 22nd, we will have to advertise it again. We're set up to do that for approximately two weeks, and then we'll submit that revised plan to HUD by the August 15th deadline. So the options that you've been given tonight all satisfy the HUD requirements. So I hope that answers your question.
All right, well, my follow-up question is this, is this activity consistent with CG... I can't say it.
With community development grant, yes, ma'am. This particular organization is identified as a community-based development organization, and they are providing services in an area that was established back in the mid-'90s as a neighborhood revitalization strategy area. And as, under that jurisdiction, which is the same jurisdiction which we provide funding for the homeless coalition, we are allowed to provide direct services outside of the CHSP kind of process that we do, and still be eligible for CDBG funds. So yes, the purposes that they're outlined for and are eligible CDBG, but they're not obligated, so I just want to make clear that. That's strictly discretionary, but they are eligible.
All right, that sounds great, and in that case, I would probably come down on the side of, well, both my colleagues here are making very, very good points. And Commissioner Maddox has said that if we don't fund the organization, how are we ever going to get our money back, for one thing? But the other, the problem I have here is that some of these things, I do feel, are more appropriately funded by our CRA. And what you've described, what Mr. Lewis has described, his work with Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, all those, and the building supplies, all of that, I think is critical. But as far as, you know, having community events and movies and things like that, that seems to me more to fall into the CRA, the CRA arena as far as appropriate source of funding. So I don't know if that gives you, me, any guidance as to which one of these options are available to us, but thanks for the options.
Please, now, please.
And you may not know the answer to this, Mr. Lewis. So the money that you're going to get from this project, what does that have?
I can answer that. The funding we're in question here starts on October the 1st.
No, 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 no.
I'm sorry.
At close, the builder's fee.
The builder's fee.
And you can, Tom can... The way our development agreement is working right now with them, they expect to close on the 2nd week of September, which is when the, as part of the sale, that we will receive the $682,000 of the outstanding balance at that point. The balance of what Mr. Lewis is referring to as the developer's fee is something we would execute an assignment agreement with his organization. That would come at various stages at the completion of the project.
Okay.
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 Commissioner Miller.
So it seems to me that we could conceivably fund this for this year in part or all, and work our way through this problem during the next 12 months, because when we're here this time next year, I'd hope to see a different funding sources utilized as opposed to just CDBG and more, and a lower debt level. So we'll be looking at a little bit different numbers. Is that a reasonable expectation?
That is a reasonable expectation. It is one of your options, yes.
I am... I'm prepared to support continuing a year, I will say, but partly mainly because I respect the work that Mr. Lewis has done writ large in this area from his time as a staff person to his commitment to the Frenchtown CDC, but that respect is mostly, if not exclusively, built out of a revolutionary revisioning of what Frenchtown can be, which specifically deals with the built environment. And if this is an entity that is moving closer toward an events-based, sponsorship-based events organization, as we've heard articulated today, I just don't think that there's a continued role for that. As a, you know, these CHODOs are not easy to come by, and when they do, they have very specific and direct mission, particularly in that area around the built environment. But I see the fairness in trying to let us work through that over the course of the year, and hopefully, you know, next year, we'll be in a different, different position in that, frankly, the CHODO will be back at its most original, and I think it's most promising work, which is in relation to the built environment. But there is no motion, other than the reconsideration.
Mr. Parker, what would the motion be if we wanted to leave the program as it is and include the Bethel CDC for the...
It would be option two in your agenda.
And there's no other change between option one and option two, other than that?
Well, that would put the fund, the $53,000 would be funded as was originally presented back on the 22nd, so that was one of the options that we gave you. That's option number two.
Move option two.
There's a motion and a second for option two. If there's no further comment, Commissioners, all in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no. Motion passes for the one. Commissioners, we're now back on to item 13.09. City Attorney.
Item 13.09 is a settlement agreement involving an employment litigation matter. It comes to you with the recommendation of myself, the city attorney, and also the city's risk manager. We're requesting approval of an employment case, this style, Mark Callo versus City of Tallahassee, is currently pending in the federal court, the Northern District of Florida. It comes as a recommended settlement after a jury verdict finding in favor of the plaintiff in the amount of approximately $845,000. It comes in the context of pending or anticipating motions for additional relief, such as front pay, and motions for attorney's fees, which the plaintiff is in, and cost, which the plaintiff is entitled to under the statutes for being the prevailing party.
Move acceptance.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second.
Discussion.
Discussion. Commissioner Maddox.
Upon talking to our attorney, I believe that there is grounds for an appeal in this case, and I believe if we thought we were right in the first place, we shouldn't be voting for a settlement today, so I'm going to vote against the motion.
Any other... Commissioner Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that, you know, part of the reason when we had the executive session and discussed this was we realized, and I think the attorney advised us as well, that at this point, we probably need to stop the bleeding, and that a jury had already awarded the plaintiff in the case, and that, it was my understanding, Mr. Attorney, correct me if I'm wrong, that our chances of prevailing in an appeal were slim. So I think what we were trying to do is just stop the bleeding and go ahead and settle this thing so that we could move forward and this individual could move forward as
Let me say, this recommendation to accept a settlement does not come lightly or without a lot of anguish on my part, but I think it's the right thing to do. I think both parties, the plaintiff, a former employee, and his family have suffered. I think many of our employees in the fire department have suffered through four years of conflict and almost three-plus years of litigation. At every stage of this, we have tried to look at this as we do in any case, any litigation case. The prospects of settlement weigh our opportunities to settle it at what amount, weigh the chance of prevailing. In this case, Commissioner Maddox, we certainly looked at our options, including appeal, and I still come and strongly recommend, as does the risk manager, that we settle this case for $1.34 million. That will include the jury verdict for $845,000. It will also include additional money for lost front pay and pension benefits. It will include all claims for attorney's fees and costs incurred in this lengthy litigation.
And, Mr. Mayor, could I ask a question of the attorney? Mr. Attorney, could you tell me how this will be paid?
This settlement, if approved, will be paid out of risk management funds. As most of you know, and perhaps the citizens in attendance don't know, we're self-insured for this type of litigation. When the claim comes in, the risk manager sets up a file and assigns reserves to it. Those reserves are constantly reviewed as litigation proceeds and adjusted upward or downward, and so there is adequate reserves in the risk management division to fully cover this settlement.
Commissioner Maddox.
I was not here for the executive session, so I'm not going to belabor this argument because it's unfair of me because I wasn't there for the executive session. I would tell you that I'm going to vote no because when you get to, if we're paying out $1.345 million, $1,345,000 to a single employee, a payout plus legal fees, and I know this happened, I guess, three years ago, but there's no management correction. So somebody, somebody's head ought to roll for the fact that we're spending $1.345 million on whatever decisions we made, and I don't know where that lies in the organization, but somebody ought to be accountable for it because it seems like every time I turn around, we're paying one of these settlements, and it ain't fun. So that's my opinion, and I'm going to voice it with a no vote.
You know, these are always untenable positions for the commission because we get bought in on this stuff pretty far down the chain. I will say, one, I think we're racking up attorney's fees on both sides, probably to the tune of $300,000 on each side.
At least.
At least $300,000 on each side. So to continue litigation and to continue to expose the public to that level of risk, for what? After what I understand was put on to be a pretty compelling case on the other side... After what I understand was put on to be a pretty compelling case on the other side. But there are people, and again, this is outside of the lawsuit, this is a management decision, this is a decision that the city manager will have to deal with through the organization. But there were some things that were done and said on our side, and I don't mean through the legal process, I mean through leading up to this whole case, which I'm sure will become increasingly more public, that I do believe that some, you know, there were, there were, there were actions that are inconsistent with the values and traditions of this organization, and they must be addressed to the extent that those folks are still within the city's employ. Because the taxpayers are biting the bill on this one, and we're biting the bill on it partly because we don't have an unmitigated case that we can go forward and prosecute on our behalf that gives us the strongest position to win. And frankly, when it gets to our level, the decisions aren't easy. This really is about where to mitigate risk. Do we keep rolling the dice going forward, running up the taxpayer tab? Or do we say, let's cut it out of number certain because the picture doesn't look like it's going to get much better than what it is right now? So I wish, you know, I wish I could, you know, take a pass or not vote to do this, but the truth is, is not voting to do this for me might be a higher cost at the end of the day to the taxpayer. And so I'm going to vote in favor. Commissioner Miller.
I just want to be very clear about one thing. My understanding was that this individual is not going to be returning to work at the city?
That's correct. The former employee will not be returning to work. He has, and that was agreed as part of the settlement, he has expressed no desire to return to work. So that was an easy part of the settlement.
But that's part of, that's clearly a part of the settlement. Thank you.
By the way, for a million bucks, I won't either.
For what?
If y'all want to give me a million bucks, I won't either, I promise. Return to work.
But we want you to return to work.
The, by the way, are all of the documents related to this case now already public record?
Well, everything, including a week-long-plus trial, is already public record. Everything in the, in the, in the city's file, in the personnel file, this will all become public record unless it's covered by some, some other exemption.
Got it. Commissioners, if there's no further discussion, is there a motion?
There is.
There is a motion and a second. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye, those opposed, no.
No.
Motion passes four to one. Commissioners, we're now on item 13.01. Commissioner Miller, you want to kick this off or should I start?
Thank you, Mayor. I so appreciate you. Yes, here we are again. You know, in, what I really want as an outcome, because I think the most important thing is to start with the desired outcome and then try to figure out exactly how to back into it, but, and in the process, consider the letter that we received today from the three universities, the two universities and TCC. In the, as this process, this discussion came up, I was very, very open to the idea that it was only fair to let everybody stay open until the same time. But as events have unfolded, it appears that the message that may have been received by some was that there were three votes, basically, to party all night long on the commission and that, so we could just go ahead and do, you know, we can continue to have fun all the way into the four o'clock hour, just as we were prior to two o'clock practically. That wasn't the outcome that I'd hoped for, and I really am at this point, that's why I asked to reconsider, and I wanted to bring this back up before we took on the break. My secondary issue was that restaurants had begun to, had begun to close and reopen as private clubs, and then as private clubs continued to just serve alcohol under the term "private club." And that was something that I was not at all happy about. So here we are at the point of reconsideration. What I want to have at the end of the day is the ability for folks who are serving beer and wine and even drinks, but their primary purpose in life is to, is to basically serve pizzas and hot dogs and whatever else, but they want to be, I want them to be able to do that well into the night, as long as, really, as long as people want to eat. Because I don't want to see everyone emptying out of the bar all at one time and getting in the car and having no alternative except to drive home. I don't think that's good for the public. I don't think it creates a safe situation on the highways. And, and I want them to be able to go and find some food. So I want those folks to be able to stay open. On the other hand, at this point, I don't have the confidence that it is going to be, that it's still okay to let the, the clubs and the bars stay open until four o'clock under the promise that they're no longer serving, they're no longer serving alcohol after two. Unfortunately, there are a whole lot of folks who are abiding by the law, who have gotten caught up in this entire scenario and find their business plans at risk because a few people continue to serve alcohol after two. The way I'd heard this, and so I finally enlisted some young people and said, you know what, I'd really appreciate it if you guys would actually go out and then report back to me. The term I use is "secret shopper." You know what secret shoppers are? Basically, they go out and they secretly shop and they find out exactly who's serving alcohol and who's not. Now, that doesn't have, that's anecdotal, and it doesn't have any, doesn't hold up in a court of law, and I'm not going to call anybody out from what these guys have reported back. But the fact is, there are some people in town who are persist, names you would all know, who are persisting in serving drinks after, into the hours. So I have a different position than I had earlier, but whatever we do here tonight, I want to make sure that, and I believe it's the SRX folks are still able to stay open and they're still able to, make sure I use the right terminology here, Melissa literally had a lot of trouble finding out the definitions of these things. And the folks that serve food and are really required to meet state regulations and so on, I want those folks to still be able to serve food as, until they feel the need to close. And if that's four o'clock, whatever. But back to the folks that are primarily bars, I'm ready to move on that one.
Commissioner Ziffer.
Just a couple of quick points. Before I do that, though, and I'm going to give this to the city attorney, just, I think it's something we should consider. The city of Tampa recently passed an ordinance that has posted near bars that cars will not be towed until 10:00 AM the next morning. And the reason why they do that is because if you're in a bar and you've had too much to drink and you drove there, you can take an Uber home or a Lyft or a taxicab and not worry about your car getting towed, which I think is brilliant. Because I think probably some kids get in their car because they don't want it towed. And I think that's something we should consider, so I'm going to pass that down. That was a good idea. So I got called out in an editorial about, I guess, not being progressive enough, and I just very quickly want to give some times. Austin, Texas, pretty cool town, probably one of the coolest towns people talk about progressive, 2:00 AM. Asheville, North Carolina, 2:00 AM. Durham, North Carolina, 2:00 AM. Ann Arbor, Michigan, now these are big schools, towns that have big schools too, 2:00 AM. Madison, Wisconsin, 2:00 AM. Gainesville, 2:00 AM. I got to tell you, we're like out there all by ourselves.
Key West is with us.
Yeah, the only one that's not, and my son lives in New Orleans, is in New Orleans, you can drink anytime you want. I'm not sure we want that reputation. I am concerned for several reasons. We have a crime problem in the city of Tallahassee. I don't think we really want to dedicate our TPD officers to have to go around enforcing what you mentioned, Commissioner, from 2:00 to 4:00 AM, they've got other things to do. Laws are currently being broken. DBPR has made it very clear to us, they're not going to investigate anything unless TPD refers them. Well, if TPD is not referring anything, DBPR is sitting there going, we got nothing to enforce. That's a problem. I'm concerned about our officers, some of our off-duty officers, being put in positions where conceivably, if something bad happens, we're going to be held up for it because they are our officers. And finally, your comment, Commissioner, about the pizza place. I have great respect for people that start their own businesses. In that particular case, they have several different locations, but that particular location isn't just a pizza place, it's a full-grown bar. They have a liquor license and it's a full-grown bar, and I'm not sure if they're ones doing what you had talked about. But the fact is, if you want to sell pizza, just do beer and wine. If you want to have a bar, rent a place next door. There's still some places in Gaines Street that are available. Open a place next door, have your bar there, close at 2:00 AM. I'm going to be exactly where I was with Commissioner Maddox on the first one, 2:00 AM, no more booze, 2:30 door closes, and if we have TPD driving around, they see a light on at 2:30, you got a problem if you're a bar owner, and I think we should be able to enforce that.
I'll just, I am happy to go back to the status quo, which was before this thing ever got rolled out, there were state regulations that guided people based off of the licenses that they had. The Florida law, and the law that is applied here in this community is you cannot serve alcohol, whether you're a restaurant or not, after 2:00 AM, period. And if you do that, you are contrary to the law, you are breaking the law, and it is enforceable by law enforcement, but it's also enforceable by the state who is, should be the primary on, on these investigative practices. To the secret shopper piece, if folks went out and that was their experience, they have every right to report them, and DBPR has every right to go in and to secret shop themselves, which is, they're the enforcement agency, they ought to be the ones out there doing that. What I objected to, and frankly, I didn't care whether it went to 4:00 AM or 2:00 AM or whatever, what I objected to was us setting a standard for folks who have these rare licenses, and we apparently, there are five that exist in the state, two of them happen to be here, I believe in Tallahassee, that allows them, because of the sale of, of, what do you call it, food, and their food receipts being more than their alcohol receipts or some formula like that, they're allowed to stay open to sell food. They are not allowed to open to sell alcohol for consumption or anything else after 2:00 AM. If they do, they are breaking the law. But the move here was to pull back on those regulations that were state regulations and say, everybody has to comport and close down at 2:00 AM regardless of if you're selling food beyond that hour or something else. To the point that Commissioner Miller made around people being able to, not forcing everyone out at the same time, I'm a big, big fan of that. I mean, the fact that you can still play music in some of these places and folks can dance off their consumption and get out of there and, and hopefully better shape than they would have if they were being pushed out at 2:00 AM, I'm fine with that. And quite frankly, I have not heard reports of, of major increases or any increases for that matter in uptick in law enforcement at these venues. What has typically happened is that for folks who close down at 2:00 AM, people tend to loiter at the gas stations and, and parking lots and in other places where frankly, there is no supervision, nobody enforcing any laws except our law enforcement folks, who are then going out and having to disperse folks in very tense situations and moments, and I think that that makes it unsafe for our law enforcement officials. In fact, if we looked at where the highest crime rates were to happen and at what hours in the day that happened, it ain't 2:00 AM, I guarantee. Unless that data has changed significantly since the last time we had this conversation, it's not 2:00 AM in the morning. And so our decisions ought to be guided by some facts, it ought to be guided by some practice that suggests that we have an issue here. Like I said, I'm happy to go back to the status quo prior to us ever touching this thing and moving it to 4:00 AM. Let the state licenses guide what happened based off of the state law, and then let the law of the state guide us with regard to 2:00 AM alcohol consumption not happening beyond that point. And that way, we don't mess with the restaurants and the folks who have the license to, to do their business, but at the same time, we're not extending hours for folks to, to be out to 4:00 AM. The status quo is my position, taking it back to prior to us ever having this conversation in the first place. Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Richardson, and then Commissioner Miller.
Mr. City Attorney, is our, you know, I apologize because this goes back to the January discussion, wasn't it originally what we were talking about doing was taking care of a loophole that existed?
Well, first of all, the folks with the SRX license are supposed to be doing 51%.
Right.
There is, and I think it's, anyone in this industry recognizes that that is only enforced by the state. And the state absolutely has cut the support folks, the law enforcement folks that do that to make it almost impossible for any real enforcement of that to take place, not only here but all over the state.
Right.
So that's number one. Number two, because of concerns about that and because of the process of, even though alcohol was supposed to be stopped all over at 2:00, and the enforcement in trying to determine if in fact alcohol was being served later than that, or if it was, food was being served all the time, or when the kitchen closed, all those kind of enforcement problems, the ordinance that was presented to you back in January, and we've only been under this four o'clock closing now since the end of February, about six months, okay? So we only have six months worth of data from TPD with four o'clock closing time. But we can certainly, in any event, we're going to have, if we're going to make any kind of change, we're going to have to pass a new ordinance, okay? Amendment ordinance. And that will take two meetings, so that's not going to happen earliest until September. We can certainly, at that point in time, then, or if you want to wait until we've actually been under the four o'clock closing system for 12 months, we've not, for example, been under four o'clock closing during the fall, during the football season, when there's, the police will tell you there's more activities in the bars and the restaurants and on the weekends than has been for the last several months. And see, see what additional data we have from a public safety perspective that is saying that we ought to do something different. I did not enclose the letter from the Vice President for Student Affairs because we just received that last night. And that's obviously a new piece of information that you all have tonight that you didn't have previously. And I certainly have not had an occasion to talk to any of those folks specifically about their stand. But they clearly want to go to a 2:00 stop alcohol, which is state law, and 2:30, everybody who sells alcohol, whether they sell pizzas or not, close.
Right.
Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Richardson, Miller, Maddox.
So, and I think all of us have probably received emails off and on from this gentleman, but it was my understanding that DBPR has said, we don't go in unless we receive a report from the local police, but this isn't only TPD, this is anywhere in the state, unless we receive notification from your local police department that there's a problem at a particular establishment. And they haven't gotten anything from us in forever. So either we don't have a problem at all, or TPD is not going in, or TPD is going in, finding out and not referring it. But I can't believe that what Commissioner's secret shoppers, and quite frankly, the affidavit that Scott Carswell provided earlier, are all lies. I mean, I got to believe there's a problem. And either we're not investigating, or we are investigating and we're not passing it on. Is the chief still here?
Yes.
Where's the chief? Chief, I have a question for you. It's a simple question. You want bars to stay up until 2:00 or 4:00? Sorry. You're, you're our chief law enforcement officer, so from a police department standpoint, 2:00 or 4:00 AM?
And Chief, while you're there, could you also talk to us about what your department has observed since this ordinance has been in place, in terms of any increase, decrease, status quo?
I'll start with a second question from Commissioner Richardson first, that's a little bit easier. Because I, I do, we do have some data on that. So we know that we've received a public record request and analysis from one of our citizens about 10, 11 of our local nightclubs that have been staying open. So what we did is we pulled the data since the ordinance has been in place, basically from March 1st to the end of June at that time, to see have we received an increased calls for service. So we looked at from 2:00 AM to 5:00 AM. Because of the, of an establishment's closing at 4:00, typically then you have the parking lot issues anytime something happens later on. lot issues anytime something happens later on. Those timeframes for 2015, we had 59 calls for service, and 2016, we've had 41. So, we've actually had less calls for service at those establishments between 2:00 a.m. to 5:00 a.m. than we did the previous year.
They're eating.
So, that, you know, where before, some of these places before were closing at 2:00, so you would have your parking lot issues or anything else that may occur between 2:00 and 3:00. Those would be shifted now to 4:00 to 5:00, which is why we adjusted those hours accordingly. We've actually had fewer calls for service at this point than we did last year at those 10 or 11 establishments that we'd received requests of information on.
My question.
So, that, like I said, that was the easier one, because certainly we did some homework. The thing that makes it easier for us, and I think is certainly something that Mr. Shill and I discussed last year, is consistency. There are some areas into current ordinance, if it's 2:00 and it makes it across the board, obviously it makes it much easier for us from an enforcement standpoint where an officer's not trying to figure out what license does a certain person have versus this establishment or that establishment. It certainly, from a consistency standpoint, makes it much easier. The issue, some of the issue that we're having right now is the ordinance, so let's say we address that there's going to be no sales of alcohol, what happens if somebody buys a six pack of beer at 1:55? There's nothing that says they can't sit there and consume their alcohol.
That's right.
So, we may be able to address some of that issue by tightening up the ordinance on the back end, saying, okay, there can be no sale or consumption, service or consumption of alcohol after 2:00 a.m. And then these businesses that are selling food, because then an officer can walk in, they walk in at 2:15, and there's bottles of beer on the tables or anything else, clear it off. It's all garbage.
Do you want to enforce that?
We have, we have officers at some of these establishments that is with secondary employment. That would make it much easier now as opposed to, it's kind of in a gray area, can they consume it or not? Is it much easier just to say no across the board? Yes, it's much easier, but our folks aren't making their livelihood on staying open those extra time. And that's the policy component, and I understand that perspective. Like I said, we, it would help us if we, if we're going to decide to keep the later hours open, to clarify and strengthen the ordinance where it says, no sale, service or consumption between 2:00 a.m. and 6:00 a.m., as opposed to just no sale. Because if it's, if someone buy, like I said, someone buys a six packet, 1:55, can they now sit there until 3:00 and drink?
I have a question of the chief, I could on point.
Sure.
I'll save my debate till my turn in the queue. Chief, you're saying that you have officers that are at the front of these establishments that will come in and take all the alcohol to tables. At that point, who does that officer work for? They're hired by whom?
Currently, they still are being compensated by the owners of those establishments.
So, they're hired and fired by the owner of the bar?
Yes.
They're paid by the owner of the bar?
Yes.
The owner of the bar can choose which officers they wish to work there?
Yes.
I think we're wildly optimistic.
And that's one of the things that we did collectively bargain for to change, and we are still in the process of changing where all those services will be contracted through the city and the police department. So, that way, we have more control and oversight of that process.
On point, do they relinquish their responsibility as law enforcement officers in these locations?
No.
They are still charged with the execution?
Yes, they are.
And the enforcement of the law as it exists on the books?
Yes.
And I believe the change that we made with regard to getting these folks assigned is they have to now go through your department. Prior to the change you made, any bar owner could choose whichever officer that they wanted to show up and man their door and work their establishment based off their own preferences.
Correct.
That is now not the case.
Well, we're still in the process of changing those things over. There's been some other issues as far as technology.
We have approved.
Yes, it isn't a kind of bargaining, yes, sir. It isn't a kind of bargaining agreement, but we have to actually, we're building a process from scratch. So, it takes some time to do with payroll changes and.
Commissioner Richardson, I think you were next on.
Yeah, you know, the point that I was going to make is that we, what we've attempted to do with this, when it came to us the first time, is to make it uniform. You know, there was back and forth, you know, within the industry and some people saying, well, anyway, I don't want to rehash all of that argument, but what we were trying to do was draft an ordinance and implement it that made everything uniform. And that's, and I think that's what we accomplished. Now, you know, if, people are going to break the law. I mean, I don't care what kind of law you've got, people break the law. People run red lights in Tallahassee all the time. And unless they're reported, or a law enforcement officer witnesses it and pulls them over, you know, they're going to get away with it. And so, so, I mean, I don't have a dog in the hunt one way or the other. I don't drink alcohol, I don't go out to bars at night, but there are people that do. And I think for the most part, the bar owners that I've interacted with, and I've gone and visited some of these guys and talked with them at their establishment, they're very responsible people, or they wouldn't be in business. And they take on a great deal of liability if they let somebody buy a six pack of beer at 1:55 and sit there and drink it till 2:30, or however long it takes them to drink it, and they leave that establishment. Because if they get in a car wreck, or if they injure somebody else, then the bartender who served them that alcohol is liable, the bar owner is liable. And I just can't imagine, I would hope that nobody would voluntarily put themselves in that kind of situation if they are a prudent business person. And I haven't heard that there have been any problems, it's only been in place for five months or so. As the attorney said, you know, if we had gone through a football season, or the start of school, or football season, and we saw some problems, certainly we can come back and either change or amend the ordinance. It sounds like, from what the chief has said, we probably ought to do the service, sale and consumption amendment regardless. But we haven't seen any major problems. As a matter of fact, we've seen a decrease in the service calls to those establishments. So, how can we justify making a change when we've seen a decrease in the service calls to those very same establishments? That just does not make any sense to me. And the last point, and certainly if it were a safety concern, if we were putting our citizens at risk, I, this wouldn't outweigh that. But we heard that there were employees at those establishments who, you know, it may not sound like a lot to us, but those two hours of employment, those extra several hours a month, and the money that they make, makes the difference in whether or not they can pay childcare, or buy groceries, or whatever other expenses. We heard the single father that came and said that's how he makes money to pay for his child's childcare. That is an issue for me, that I think we ought to be concerned about. And like I said, certainly that does not outweigh the safety and security of the 180,000 citizens of this community. But, but if, but if we've seen a decrease in service calls, I don't know where that is an issue at this point.
Thank you.
So, I would, I would support at least giving this thing a year, and then seeing where we are at that point, if the statistics continue to show that there's a decrease, or it stays flat, then we make a decision at that point. But certainly, if we see, when all of the students get back in town, you know, we see a rapid uptick, then I'm all for the 2:00 o'clock. And then my last point would be, Mr. Mayor, just as they could buy a six pack at 1:55 and sit there and drink it until 4:00 o'clock, they can buy a six pack at 1:55 and take it to the car and drink it and drive.
Commissioner Miller, followed by Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Well, a couple of things. First of all, I've been talking with the folks who own some of these establishments, and one of the ideas that I had presented to me was that we just control the amplified sound, that the sound, basically no more bands, no more amplified sound after 2:00. And that basically, that's the big attractant, and that's one way of addressing the activity and keeping people there at, till 4:00 o'clock. There are other cities that do things in different ways than we do. I mean, these party, number, going back to the hours, the number two party school, of course, we're number one with our 4:00 closing time. Oh, don't, don't think that you're off the hook.
Really?
And Miami is at 3:00, Gainesville, the number three party school is at 2:00, Winter Park, Rollins College, who knew, the closing time, if they have a special permit, is at 2:00. So, this is just with preliminary, and then in Daytona Beach, they, no new customers can come in after 2:30. I don't know how you'd, good luck with that. But the bottom line is that I realize it's more difficult for you to figure out who has what kind of license, but at this point, I just am uncomfortable with the 4:00 closing time, and if that means that we have to have a uniform rule that applies to everybody, then I'm going to want to see that moved up to 3:00. And if we can't differentiate between the two, ideally, I'd like to have the bars close at 2:00. I mean, first of all, by the way, the state statute says midnight, midnight, not 2:00. And so, our, all of us, all these towns that have been discussed tonight, have just, have chosen by ordinance to extend that to 2:00. The state law also eliminates the private club option unless allowed by ordinance, and so I want to see you enforce that starting tonight. I mean, nobody should be having, I mean, we haven't passed an ordinance that allows private clubs to open back up and act like they're somebody's home. People are, if somebody wants to have a party, they're more than welcome to rent out a space and have a band and do whatever. But the fact is that as far as the, these businesses that we're talking about, I, those posters that we were seeing in the beginning of this discussion, I just can't, that's just not okay. And for that to be the norm, where bars just close and then they just reopen as private clubs, I've been to Salt Lake City, all you have to do is pay $5 and you're a member of the private club. Gee. So, so that is, that's a separate issue, but I want to make it clear that from my perspective, we haven't passed an ordinance, it is against the law to do that, and so no more flyers that say, oh, we're having a special private party until 3:00 o'clock. So, where are we? I mean, I realize I'm rambling basically, but there's just a whole lot of ways to look at this. And bottom line, if we have to have the uniform ordinance for everybody, it's going to have to be 3:00. And I would hope that somebody besides my aide is doing something to, I'd like to ask you to continue to collect your data all the way through, since we're going to have to take this up in the fall, since it's going to take an ordinance. I'm open to the idea of letting it run through football season and then see what we got in not going all the way to football, end of football season, but by October. Then we look at your data from August, September and October and see what we have, and determine our closing time then. And by that time, hopefully, we will have done more research and we will find other options. And so, that's what I'm asking of you, and I know you're dying to sit down, so if you need to sit down right now, that's okay. But basically, it just isn't working as it is. Not, I'm just not comfortable with what we're, the situation we've got out there right now. And it would be better for us to solve this before everybody gets back from school, at least, at least on the private club option.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox, followed by Commissioner Ziffer.
Y'all are driving me to drink. I mean, who goes to Salt Lake City to drink in a private club? I would party with you, I'm just saying. That sounds like a party there. Let me bring up some different things, I'll get to my position. First of all, let me amend what this city attorney said. There are, there are different SRX licenses. There's a 4CP license, which is a full liquor license, allows you to sell full liquor, of course, beer and wine, but full liquor, and it doesn't, regardless of whether you serve food or not. There are beer and wine licenses, which are separate from full liquor. There are SRX licenses that allow you to sell liquor, alcohol, mixed drinks, if you serve 50% plus one of food, if your billings per month, per revenue, per month. And then there are SRX licenses, very few in the state, that allow the late closing. That's where we reach the quandary that we are in today. You know, I was thinking about Commissioner Meisberg throughout this, and I was going to talk about it and sharing of ideas with my friend Commissioner Meisberg, but he talked about, he brought binge drinking as a problem to the commission. And the point that he made was, if we continue to be known as binge drinking, if we continue to be known as a party school, that people will be uneasy about sending their students to Florida State, Florida A&amp;M and Tallahassee Community College. I think we've seen evidence of that by an unprecedented letter to us from the universities asking us to reverse a decision that we have made in the past. Commissioner Richardson mentioned the jobs, and he said that, that they touched him, but they had to balance that against the safety of 180,000 people. I know you watched my interview at the Tallahassee Democrat where I use those exact words. While I was touched by the people that came forward, and you always don't want to take a person's livelihood away from them, we also are tasked with making decisions for many more people than just the few. Yes, if a person in a bar that is allowed to stay open past 2:00 a.m. is allowed to drink that six pack today, they can take it outside and drink it in the car and drive, but one is allowed and one is not. One is legal today and one is not legal today. So, basically, I'm a little tired. I've been going 12-plus hours straight. We have had this issue, lots, lots of public hearings, we talked to everybody over and over again. Commissioner Ziffer and I were in favor of a 2:00 a.m. stop for alcohol sale and 2:30 close. Commissioner Miller, Richardson and Mayor Gillum were in favor of the 4:00 a.m. close ordinance that we have today. Tonight, we have heard that Commissioner Richard, Commissioner Ziffer and I are in the same position, Commissioner Richardson's in the same position. Mayor Gillum would like to either go back to what we had prior to 4:00, the 4:00 a.m. ordinance, or I imagine as a default position to his earlier vote. So, Commissioner Miller, either say what you want, make a motion, or let's leave it alone. Can I make just one more comment? First of all, most bar owners in town do not want to stay open after 2:00. They just don't, because if you can't sell liquor, you can't make money. That's the bottom line. Second thing is, because I've talked to a lot of them, their employees, they don't want to be there after 2:00 if they can't sell liquor, because guess what? You don't make a whole lot of tips selling pizza. You don't. You sell, you make a lot of money selling liquor. So, workers don't want to work past 2:00 a.m. unless they can sell alcohol. And the last thing is, one of those young ladies that came before us and talked about how she was going to lose her job, so I ran into her because she's working somewhere else now, and she said, my manager told me to do that. Okay? She had, okay? I'm just trying to take, we're making a lot of decisions based upon a couple of people that were concerned about their jobs, and I get that, but the fact is, none of these people are making money after 2:00 a.m. unless they're selling alcohol. So, what I'm going to ask for is if we stay where we are, chief, and I know you don't want to do this, and this is, I guess, more of a city manager decision, but I'd like to see more officers going into the bars between 2:00, 3:00 a.m., 2:00 and 4:00 a.m., see who's selling alcohol, take those reports, walk them over to DPR and have those licenses pulled. Because if they're selling alcohol after 2:00, and they're not supposed to be, their licenses get pulled. That's our responsibility to enforce. DBPR has told us, it's up to you guys to do that, send it over to us and we'll investigate. But they're not going to do anything until we send them something. So, if we stay with where we are now, I would hope that from a law enforcement standpoint, and I know it's not a number one priority, but I got to tell you, if they're breaking laws selling alcohol, it becomes a priority. So, I'd like to see that enforced.
Commissioner Miller? Commissioner Maddox?
For lack of a motion, Mr. Mayor, let's move to 1311.
I'll just, Commissioner Miller, was there another?
Sway to my turn.
Okay, go ahead.
Well, first of all, I feel like we almost don't have enough information anymore. It's such a messed up, confusing, and I think that's the chief, that's his nightmare, is that it's confusing to everybody. And so, I would say that I would make a motion that, and I wanted to correct you on one thing, we had, we made a, when we changed, we changed to say alcohol, no more alcohol sales after 2:00 and closing at 4:00. We didn't just say, stay open till 4:00. So, that is a huge difference of, that's a huge difference as far as, so let's stick to the real thing. I think we should not allow liquor sales after 2:00. I think we should close at 3:00. I think we should close at three. Because I still have a huge, huge, huge concern about everybody walking out the door at the same time. I still want people to have a chance to sit there and go out the door slowly, and I would like for somebody to look into the concept of eliminating amplified music after two o'clock. They can have music, it just can't be amplified.
That doesn't require, that's not a public hearing, though, if we say, because couldn't we do that part of the sound ordinance?
That, yes.
We can't change the ordinance by vote tonight. Okay? You can direct me in any motion to bring you back an ordinance that will change the closing time, and the first I'm going to be able to do that is September 14th, and it's then going to be set for a public hearing on September 28th. That's the only way we can change the ordinance that you adopted back at the end of January.
How difficult is?
But I need to know what you want me to bring back, or I can bring you back the same ordinance as I did before that gave you three options then in terms of a closing time. And in the meantime, you know, with the, any additional information and data that we have, to the point that I bring it back from police records, we can certainly present to you.
There was a motion, and I don't know if there was a second.
Is there a motion?
To instruct, I believe Commissioner Miller framed a motion.
The motion was to stop alcohol sales at two and close by three.
Appleby Music?
That's a secondary motion. Let's, we're going to take a, I'm going to make another motion, amend about noise.
There's a motion and a second. I'll just say, the, first of all, we've been here so long, my Apple Watch is dead. I can't even, I can't tap it for the time anymore. But you know what, prior to us meddling with this issue, not just tonight, but when we first dealt with it, there were no letters to the editor about this, except for about noise, which we created a noise ordinance to address noise. There were no police data, because we didn't request it, because we had not said this was a concern, and there was no unprecedented letter from vice presidents of student affairs, from any of the institutions under the previous condition. We are, we created the problem, the situation that we are now in by meddling with the law, that quite frankly came to my attention, and I don't know what everybody else will confess to, but it came to my attention when a bar owner came into my office and said, "I have tried for years to figure out how to make money after 2:00 AM without selling alcohol, and I can't figure it out, and I believe that anybody else who's doing it must be breaking the law. We ought to change the rules to fit the business model that I can make work." That's a problem. This wasn't to address any other bar owners in this city, or their need to make money or any of that other stuff. Like I said, and I still remain here, I don't care whether it's two or four, that wasn't it. I'm in favor of the status quo, which allows people under the license that they get from the state to operate, and there is some inconsistency in that. But given where we are, what I would be in favor of, is I'd be in favor of increased penalties for bar owners themselves. If you are holding yourself out there as a place that you can come to after 2:00 AM and we'll slide you some alcohol under the radar after two, then we need some strict penalties to shut them down. And I believe in draconian penalties, because if folks are doing that to maneuver the system, then they ought to be penalized, and they shouldn't operate in our community, and we should do everything that we can to shut their businesses down by breaking the law. I'd be interested in instructing the city attorney, bring back increased penalties that put the modicum of responsibility, all of it, on the folks who are running these places, and that way, it doesn't matter if you have a law enforcement officer who's a little friendly with the bar owner. Because the disincentive is to the bar owner to allow this kind of conduct to, to ensue under their ownership, leadership, whatever model. I would also be in favor of the recommendation that the chief made, which was around no sale, no service, and no consumption after 2:00 AM. Meaning if it's out there, it goes to the trash. Somebody goes through, and if you break that law, that there are firm penalties on the bar owner, on the owners themselves. And then, you know, to, again, to the question of consistency, I don't believe that there are that many folks, at least there weren't prior to this owner coming and telling me that everybody in the world was doing it. Actually, he only named two entities that he understood to be doing it, which means that I don't believe that there was wholesale breaking, of folks staying open after that hour. I believe there were probably two of them as were identified at the time, which means we ought to be able to at least narrow our lens close enough to the folks who, if they're breaking the law, we can sting on them, and we can shut them down if that's what's indeed happening. But I don't think we're going to get real compliance until we come down with a hammer on the folks who are incentivizing this stuff and allowing it to happen in their jurisdictions under their noses. So, again, I'm for status quo with the two recommendations around the increased penalty on the owners themselves, and no sale, service, or consumption of alcohol after 2:00 AM.
So, you want to reiterate what status quo is?
Well, the status quo is, I don't know what it was, the other, I honestly don't. I under, the way I understood it was, that if you were just a bar, plain and simple, you had to close at 2:00 AM. And that if you had a license to operate, to sell food, to do those other things, that you could stay open under the guidelines of Florida state law.
Till 6:00 AM.
And that's how, that's how, what is it?
6:00 AM.
Till 6:00 AM. So, 6:00 AM under the other, under the other condition.
Five or 5:00 AM, it's either five or six.
Whatever the law, whatever you tell me Florida law allows for those folks with those licenses, and I understand that there are two of them that are operating in this community, and then we had the pizza folks who fell under that in some way, shape, or form. But the two problem areas where identified for us, I think, follow Florida law, and everybody else follows what our, what our conditions are to, if you are a bar, you close at 2:00 AM, and that's, you know, that's it. I don't know what language you used to describe our previous condition. I know you were trying to get us to a more universal position.
The problem was, we're having a huge problem after 2:30 with folks having different licenses. So, if we return to that status quo, then we're going to continue to have those problems.
Well, that status quo, except a new set of regulation, which I'm hoping your office can generate, that puts the onus on the owners themselves, and if the law is broken in their establishments, whether they are there, whether they're absentee owners, whether they run the club, whether they run the bar, that they will be shut down. There's a penalty associated with breaking the law of the state of Florida and the ordinances of the city of Tallahassee. And that we add the provision, so I guess it's a status quo improvised, that you cannot sell, that you cannot service, and that you cannot consume after 2:00 AM in these establishments.
Where are we?
I don't know if I can make friendly amendments, but if I can, that would be my friendly amendment.
I would accept your friendly amendment.
Okay. There's a, Commissioner Miller is reflecting that she accepts the friendly amendment, which again, authorizes the city attorney's office to come back with a set of penalties associated directly with owners of these establishments, that again, keeps, I think the status quo around 2:00 AM for bars, and then will acknowledge and recognize the laws of the state of Florida governing the other licenses, and that we will develop an ordinance that says no sale, service, or consumption of alcohol after 2:00 AM.
And so, is part of that completely leave open, except as provided by state law, how late you can stay?
Absolutely.
Well, it says state law allows no alcohol after, until after midnight. Is that really what you want?
Well, that, no, 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 he's referring to the additional licenses.
A closing time.
So, point of clarification, so the special SRX licenses that allow closing beyond 4:00 AM prior to this ordinance would still have closing beyond 4:00 AM under the friendly amendment, correct?
That, which I believe, which I believe is either five or six.
That's not as friendly.
And frankly, if that wanted to come, if y'all were in favor of bringing that down to four, I'd be, I think, honestly, are there people here? Are there folks there? I'm going to let my friendly amendment stand as it is, and frankly, we can't do anything on it until we have something in front of us that codifies this in some kind of ordinance language.
I'd be supportive of everything you said, Mayor. I just want to make sure that the chief starts to enforce what we have right now, is no alcohol after 2:00 AM right away. Just start enforcing it, and get those reports to DBPR, and then we'll go from there.
Just on discussion. Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Okay, so, understanding what we're doing now. Commissioner Miller said, "I would like all alcohol to stop being served at 2:00 AM," which by the way, it is right now in the ordinance, was before, is now. Then she said she wanted bars to close at 3:00 AM. Then the friendly amendment adds punishments, fines, that, bring that back for violation. It adds the consumption piece beyond 2:00 AM, but it says that the special SRX licenses that allow them to stay open till 5:00 or 6:00 AM goes back to 5:00 or 6:00 AM, which was what triggered our whole discussion to begin with, because you had some bars that had to close at two and some closed by four. So, if this is indeed a friendly amendment, I'm going to vote against it, and let's have the vote, and then we'll figure out from there.
Well.
Commissioner Miller? Show your motion.
Well, I think I'm on board of your entire friendly amendment, except for the up and ended, all the way until 5:00 or 6:00 AM part, and I really do think we're going to have to move, in the light of the letters that we've gotten from the universities, I would really feel more comfortable moving that to 3:00 o'clock.
Well, then, my motion is more hostile than friendly, but...[1253.13][1253.13](laughter)
Mr. Mayor, if we end up staying here till 3:00, I'm in favor of the 4:00 AM bar closing.[1261.58][1261.58](laughter)
In that case, you have incentivized me to hold this meeting over as long as possible. Commissioner, our consent at this stage, I do think that an ordinance will have to come back that will require us to debate this further, so at least just give some guidance to the manager under your...
And the chief also.
Well, the chief understands, I believe, to enforce the law as it exists, which I think that doesn't change, but that's where we, that's where we are. Commissioner Miller?
And in the enforcement, I don't think, first of all, it is totally unfair and unreasonable, and as Commissioner Maddox says, very optimistic to ask your officers who are working secondary employment at the club to also double as a law enforcement officer for the city of Tallahassee at that time. Even if they are, they're there, I understand they're there, and they have all the rights of that officer to deal with fights and so on, but the fact is, they, that's the wrong, that's the wrong scenario to put out there. If you're going to have to send your own secret shoppers in, you're going to have to send some plainclothes folks in to order drinks to find out the information that you need to know, and it's not fair for those people to be the uniformed officers who are working secondary, secondary employment. I mean, you're not going to...
No, my only problem with that is, is we're basically saying then if you have a police officer there, they don't have to enforce it. And I don't think that's what we want to say.
I don't.
I mean, I think what is said is that, and I think you confirmed this, that your law enforcement officers have to follow the law.
If they're there, they were just a violation, they're supposed to address it.
Right, yeah.
Whether it happens, it's, you know...
Mr. Mayor, just, what I would suggest, I'm about to call a question on the original motion. Prior to calling question, I would ask this one thing. We are going to have this ordinance brought back to us. This is not a case of first impression, we've seen this an awful lot, and we've heard testimony from an awful lot of people. I suspect we're going to hear testimony from those same people all over again. We're going to go through the process all over again. I would ask each one of us to do some soul searching and find a position that we would like ahead of time, and so, as soon as we go in, when we have a chance to vote on this, we vote on it, so I don't want to just keep kicking it back and forth. With that, I call the question on the, call the previous question on the motion.
Second, ma'am.
Great. Commissioners, we are going to vote on the motion as amended and then reamended by Commissioner Miller that includes the 3:00 AM. I will confess that, in response to your point, Commissioner Maddox, that I'm still at the status quo position, but again, we can debate that when we get there. That's the motion. All those in favor, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, so no. Motion passes.
That was not with the friendly amendment, correct?
It, not with the, not with the status quo friendly amendment, it's with the 3:00 AM.
That was not included.
Not included.
Two for, and 3:00 AM closed.
Two o'clock liquor sales, 3:00 AM closing.
Thank you.
Was the service, sale, and use in there?
Yes, yes, yes. All those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Right, secondary.
Yes, Commissioner Miller?
I would like for, well, I'd like to have the option of bringing back in the fall discussion of the amplified, the idea of amplified sound after we have a chance to get out in the community over the summer and talk to folks and see if that's even a feasible plan, but I would like to have, no, I'm not making a motion or anything like that. I'm just saying that I would like to give you all notice that I'm going to be bringing that up again, so...
She wants to amplify that we're going to bring back amplified sound.
Yeah, that we're not going to...
Sounds great.
We may be limiting that.
There it is.
Sounds good.
Mayor?
Yes.
And as far as bringing this back, I'm getting from the discussion that whether I bring it back in September, when we'll have both budget hearing, both of those meetings, or I bring it back in October, or even early November, any of those is a good option.
Sounds good. Okay, great, thank you all. We're now on item 13.11.
I move approval at the Meadows at Oak Grove subdivision plat.
There's a motion and a second. No discussion, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously, and if I'm not mistaken, we're at citizens to be heard on unengaged items. Treasury Clerk.
Mr. Mayor, we have two speakers. Dan Gilbertson is first, and I believe it's Michelle Gomez is second.
Good evening. I know it's late, so I'll make this really quick, and everyone wants to get home, but real quickly, I'm up here for the Parker House, the historic house on College Avenue. I had a previous application for a historic grant and loan program that was approved, unfortunately due to much complications with that particular property and a death of a partner at the time. It never went forward with that, because we had some stormwater, anyways, I won't bore you the details, but, so those funds were actually appropriated, and they went back into the funds. I had a new application, went in in May, and unfortunately, because of some complications with the property that we fully expect to have done next week or two, have finished, well, I'm trying to get this renovated for September, so the problem with, you're not going to meet again, the application won't go in front of you for approval until it comes back, well, I'm going to have to get some of the, the same items that I had, what my request is, some of the items that were previously approved in the last application for improvement of the facade of the historic house, if it goes in front of you and gets approved, that'll be allowed to be funded for items that I'm going to do before the next approval, for the reapproval. Did that complicate everything for you?
Madam Mayor, pretend, if I can.
Yes.
Yes, sir.
So, what you're, what you're asking is, you've been approved on a previous cycle for a historic grant for facade improvements, among other things. You could not meet the deadline due to other development problems, you could not meet the deadline, the dollars returned to the grant, you are seeking another grant and made application for the same thing you've already been approved for, and however, before we can meet again, you will have made the improvements, and you're asking if you make said improvements to our specifications to the grant, could you be considered for reimbursement of said improvements?
Yes, if you approve them again, that because, so, right now, you have the approval process, you have to be approved before you can do the work, to be funded for work, so I'm going to have that. So, yes.
I'm fine with that.
Can you make a motion?
I move that we give that consideration when it comes back.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, if I may...
There's a motion and a second on the floor to approve the request?
Mr. Mayor, may I make a comment there? Just, that request comes through the Historic Property Grant and Loan Committee, and a couple of us here are on that committee. I don't have all the information on that. I believe there are some differences in the proposed application from what was before, maybe similar in scope and scale, but we would want to be sure that that comes to us for that consideration, and if there are significant differences, we may need to bring that back to you, but if it's the same item, then I think...
That's included in the motion, and we can deliberate when it comes back.
Commissioner Zipper?
What are the hours going to be? Just curious. I'm sorry. Nothing, forget it. Moving on.
It's too soon, too soon.
So, did you...
All those in favor, all those in favor, let it be known by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, sir.
Next is Michelle Gomez, and then we do have Ed Hallifield. And I don't see her, so Ed Hallifield, as far as I know, is our last speaker of the evening. evening.
You know, we speak in terms of police brutality, but what we have from you is brutality by public policy. You may remember the Bower mask affair when Gillum and FSU and John Marks tried to put a Bower mask plant less than a mile from Sabal Palm Elementary School. Even though black kids are hospitalized for asthma per 100,000, at twice the rate for whites, it didn't matter. But to get back to TMH, which was my original reason for coming here, I think we should all take a lesson from Russell Anderson. Now, most people think Dr. Brickler was the first person to apply for staff privileges at TMH. That was not true. It was Russell Anderson. Russell Anderson had an MD degree from Howard University, but he also had a PhD degree from the University of Pittsburgh in biological sciences. MD plus PhD, applies to TMH in 1965. Smarter than any other doctors on the staff, any other white doctor, there were only white doctors on the staff, and was denied. The first black to apply to TMH with a MD and a PhD was denied. Why? Simply because he was black. And who was the CEO at TMH at that time? M.T. Mustang. M.T. Mustang. The chairman of the board was a very powerful white politician, Mallory Horne, and they denied him, and he was kept off the staff until the federal government said, "Unless you let blacks into this hospital, both as patients and as staff, we will shut you down." That's how TMH integrated. They were forced to, by the government. And now, M.T. Mustang is being honored...
Excuse me, that's 30 minutes.
...with a quarter of a billion dollar addition to the hospital. And what has happened to Russell Anderson, the first to apply? He hasn't been honored at all. And since you people control that hospital...
Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
You need to tell TMH...
Yeah, we did. You exceeded your time. We're going to go ahead and wrap up. We're going to try to be excellent at it.
I got a cookie.
Thank you. Commissioner Ziffer, followed by Commissioner Maddox.
Mr. Mayor, okay. Couple of quick things. I've had some meetings with some representatives from the All Saints neighborhood. They have asked, and what I'm asking is, it's nothing official, but they are interested in preserving some of the existing feel for that area, and they're, they're zoning to protect what they do, but they just want to have a conversation with some of our staff to maybe come back to this commission with some suggestions, and so I'm just asking, I can work with them and some of our staff, would like to, maybe Mr. Tetter or Cherie or someone, and just hear what they have to say, and then come out with some suggestions. That's one thing. The other thing is, I will not be at the Chamber of Commerce retreat. I will be in League of Cities meeting. It's unavoidable. I get to move up to First Vice. But Paula Smith has arranged for a tour of what's known as the Sam Bickers collection, and it is a world-renowned collection of Florida art. It's quite frankly amazing. I was able to go there when I was with the Museum of Florida History. She has a tour planned for Saturday, but she's making also available for Friday. For those that have a conflict Saturday, I think we all got the book from her. I would urge all of you to try to attend either the Friday or Saturday tour. There's a possibility for us to get the collection here, and if that happens, we have scored some huge points, and there'll be a lot of people want to come to Tallahassee to see this, so if you can, please make the time to do that.
Thank you. Commissioner Maddox?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I want to thank again the Senior Center for opening their doors up to us, and thank Commissioner Ziffer, who is a longtime member of the center.
Not as long as Tom Coe.
Often does arts and crafts on this very floor for, for suggesting this. And on a, on a Saturday note, we lost two former city commissioners since we last met. Joan Hagan, we recently lost, who died under care of hospice. Joan was the first female city commissioner in the city of Tallahassee. She also served as, as a assistant county attorney, county administrator. She had great service to this community and was really a, a great person, one that I had privilege of knowing. Commissioner Steve Meisberg, who I had the great privilege of serving with, also passed away, and Steve did a lot of outstanding things, including the Winter Festival, the CHSP process, neighborhood collaboration. He was a great city commissioner with a, with an open heart. They will both be missed, and so I want to publicly tell their families that their, their family at the city of Tallahassee is indeed sad about their passing. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, sir. Commissioner Richardson, followed by Commissioner Miller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Couple of budget issues and then a request. The, the budget issues, and I'm sorry that Mrs. Collins has had to sit through all of this, but she has, and she's persevered, but I, at the previous budget meeting prior to this afternoon, I, I gathered it was unanimous that we wanted the request from the Bethel CDC included in the budget for the, I mean, I'm sorry, the reentry program.
Ready for work.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. I'm getting CDCs and CRAs. Yeah, the reentry program included in the budget, but it wasn't, and so I would ask that prior to the next budget hearing, that we have a recommendation on that, as well as legal services of North Florida. We all had expressed a desire to see them be funded as well, so we can get a recommendation on those two projects prior to the next budget workshop. And then I would like to request, Mr. Mayor, that we get an update or a status report on the consolidation of the MWBE program. I'd like to know where that is at this point, and how we're moving forward with establishing that office.
I want to join you in flagging the ready-for-work piece. I'm actually imagining the manager's going to have to bring back quite a few adjustments based off of tonight's budget. Hopefully, we'll get a chance to discuss that a little bit further. Commissioner Miller, if you, Commissioner Richardson, were you done, I'm sorry?
Yes.
Yeah, Commissioner Miller?
And of course, all of these expenses are going to come off of maintenance, because we've taken $3 million off the table tonight, and that's all going to come off of the maintenance, which I won't go on. The bottom line is that it does create an interesting segue into the comment that I wanted to make tonight, and it follows Commissioner Maddox's comments. We have lost two city commissioners, former city commissioners, in one very short period of time. Ever since I came here, it has been almost a guiding principle of mine to try to remember the people that went before me, because when I got here, I realized what a gift that they had given me. The actions that the commissions prior to us sitting here, the actions that they had taken in the past, not just last year or five years ago, but, but 15, 20, 30, 40 years ago, set this government on a course to be this city that we have today. We have a fabulously-run government, no matter, there are a lot of critics, but I would put this government up against any government in this United States, essentially. Mistakes have been made about, as people got in and dug in to try to, try to make things better, they maybe had a little bit of a learning curve on that public relations piece and bringing the public along with them, and I think that's definitely part of what we've, we've talked about tonight. But the fact is that they have left us a city that is, is set up in a way, they have taken care of business, they've made hard decisions in the past, and that's why we are able to govern, and when I got here, I realized that things could have been very different for me, sitting here. So, I wanted to just take this time to honor those two commissioners who've passed, Joan Hagan and Steve Meisberg, and thank them again, along with all of the former city commissioners living, that are still out there in our city today, and thank them for the government that they left us to work with.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Ziffer?
And just one, one quick comment, I apologize. The last week and a half or so has been very trying for this country, and I want to thank you, Mr. Mayor. The prayer vigil that you called did, did something that, that I think the city needed to do, but you demonstrated that we can come together, this, all five of us, the city manager, lots of us were there. Your words struck me as deeply personal, but also deeply important, because it also reminded me of your efforts with the longest table, because that brought, certainly many of us that attended, what we were trying to achieve before all these things happened in the last week and a half. So, I want to thank you for your leadership, and I want to thank you for your heart, because it's all in the right place. So, thank you for being my mayor and being my friend.
I appreciate that, Commissioner. I just want to, on that vein, thank all of, all of you, and all of you all, and the citizens who participated, yes, in the longest table, but also last night. I think Commissioner Maddox got at this earlier in the week during his press conference that he and Commissioner Richardson participated in, where probably we were seeing some of the same kinds of really distasteful and kind of disgusting conversations on social media, where people just, in my opinion, forgot what it meant to have empathy for just the loss of life, regardless of who life, whose life it was, but the, the absence of empathy was, was on full display. And I want to thank you all for your early leadership in the week in doing that. And then the community, who, many of us were inside the actual church itself, but there were another 100 people underground in the overflow room, watching this being streamed on Facebook Live, which was extraordinary, and I think a lot of people just needed that opportunity to come together as a community, but that's what we've been trying to inspire here, all of us, and it was on, it was on really important display last night. So, thank you to everyone, and thank you for those comments, Commissioner. I also want to join my colleagues in recognizing, in the tradition of those who came before us, Commissioner Hagan and Commissioner Meisberg, not enough can be said about the historic nature of their service and the government, and I too want to thank them for the strong legacy in which all of us are continuing to build. It's very important. And I want to thank you all who have stuck in this with us this evening, and to y'all, I'll see y'all in the morning. We're back at this in the morning. If there are, if there are no further comments, last but not least, I don't know if the staff of the Senior Center is gone or what, but, back there, there they are, they're still Thank, thank you to you all for opening up your doors to us. I know that we displaced a number of activities today, and again, to reiterate, Commissioner Ziffer is to blame for that. And I also want to thank the staff of communications. They needed to keep this meeting open to the public, and they lauded all this equipment down here to make it, make sure that that could still happen. And then to the staff at Parks and Rec, who, in our building and facilities maintenance, Pat, you and your folks, I see you in the back, and over here, I want to thank you all for excellent work in trying to make sure that we could do this in a seamless way, so lots of appreciations to go around. We'll see you in the morning, and for those we won't see, have a great summer, and we'll be back soon. This meeting is adjourned.[1756.33]